All right, we want to welcome everyone to the San Bernardino City Unified School District Board of Education meeting. And we are going to call our meeting to order. And we are going to start 1.2 with our pledge of allegiance from Salinas Elementary. Very good, very good. They did a great job. Shout out to you little people. We appreciate you. All right, we are now going to move to 1.3 approval of the agenda. All right, it's been moved and second. And I don't believe there's anything that was going to be pulled, won't be pulled at this time. So we will go ahead and take the vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you so much. We are now moving to 1.4 inspirational message. And we will be inspired by Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Madam President. As all of you know, and I hope everyone in your home and everyone you have been in contact with today, know that this is Women History Month. So I bring you greetings from all the women throughout the world. So this month, we celebrate every woman on the planet. You bring so much love and beauty into our world just by being in it. And it makes everyone a little bit happier. The sun shines brighter when you smile, ladies. So keep smiling. Our world would mean nothing without women. Our courage exists in perfect harmony with amazing tenderness saves our world every day. Women's Month is an amazing opportunity to remind ourselves that fighting for our women is a very important thing to do. Support every woman around you and respect everything we do. Why? Because we deserve it. Every life begins with a woman. We tend to forget about that. On this day, let's thank every woman in our life and show us some love today. I want you to know that I did Google and pull these together. So these are my own creations. Wishing Women's History Month to strong, intelligent, talented, and simply wonderful women of this world. Women, don't you ever forget that we are loved and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. That was very inspiring. I would say drop the mic inspiring. Shout out to our women. All right. Moving on to 2.1 Resolution in Recognition of Cesar E. Chavez. And I'm going to ask Dr. Wyatt if you can read that for us tonight. I don't know if you're off mute, though.
There we go. Now I'm pulling board docs up. And my pleasure, Madam President. All right. I could see it. Whereas Caesar Chavez was a leader for civil rights, Latinos, farmworkers, and labor, a community servant and social entrepreneur, a crusader for nonviolent social change, environmentalists, and consumer advocate. And in the words of Robert F. Kennedy, one of the heroic figures of our time. And whereas Caesar Chavez led the first successful farmworkers' union in American history, achieving dignity, respect, fair wages, medical coverage, pension benefits, and humane living conditions, as well as countless other rights and protections for hundreds of thousands of farmworkers. And whereas Caesar Chavez's organization became, in 1966, the United Farmworkers of America, AFL-CIO, which shares in common with all organized labor the goals of dignity, respect, fair wages, medical coverage, and pension protections for old age. And whereas the Board of Education recognizes contributions made by Caesar E. Chavez and named a middle school in honor of this great man. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino Unified School District hereby recognizes the many contributions and accomplishments of Caesar E. Chavez and encourages all district schools to conduct appropriate activities in observance of his birthday on March 31st.
Move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and second. Thank you for reading that. If there's no comments. I just want to say I'm just proud of our school district of the many names. You know, I wasn't here when all the names of these schools came about, but everyone doesn't have that. And we honor a lot of great leaders on the names of our schools. So just wanted to add that. All right, we will take the vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. We're now moving to 3.1 into our closed session. Ms. Cunningham is there? Any comments for closed session?
No, Madam President, there are no comments for that.
All right, if there are no comments for closed session, we are now going to adjourn to our closed session and we will return as soon as possible. So Board, let us log out and let us log into our closed session.
There is a comment.
Is there a comment?
Yes.
President Rogers, I believe that President Ashley Betisakala has a comment.
I thought so, but I didn't.
Okay, I'm sorry. She put 4.2, so I thought we would have her speak when we're getting ready to vote.
Okay. If she's ready to speak now, she's on the line?
Yes, I would like to speak.
We're ready to hear you.
Good evening, President Rogers, member of the Board and Cabinet. I'm Ashley Betisakala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. I would like to speak to you on item 4.2, Certified Non-Reelects, this evening. I would like to bring to the Board's attention that tonight, the district is presenting employees for non-relect and that the decision that you make tonight will have a direct effect on the livelihood of an employee and will impact the trajectory of their career. I also want to make the Board aware that SBTAs deeply concerned about current administrators following the evaluation process as agreed upon by SBTAs and SBCUSD in our current collective bargaining agreement, which provides that employees will be given timely feedback and support to improve their practice. This is extremely important for this article to be followed as agreed to for our probationary employees, so they are aware of their status as an employee and have an understanding of how to be successful within their assignment. If this article and current practices for noticing probationary employees are not being followed, then SBTAs expects that this situation be remedied immediately as it will have future consequences that will affect our bargaining unit members. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you again, Ms. Betisakala. And if there are no other comments, just double checking. All right, if there are no other comments, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you.
Since the school closures in March of 2020, the San Bernardino City Unified School District Custodians have continually maintained our school facilities during our student and teacher absences. They have played a key role in the upkeep of our schools and buildings. And these essential employees will be vital in the cleaning and sanitation of our classrooms and offices once it's deemed safe to reopen our district. Thanks to our custodians, we can assure our students, parents, and staff that when safe to do so, their return to the classrooms and offices will be met with cleaned and maintained facilities. Custodians sanitized many district sites as part of our COVID cleaning team, learned new sanitation protocols, and will clean all surfaces more frequently in this new environment. We want families to know that everyone in the San Bernardino City Unified School District, including the heroes on our custodial staff, are here to support them during these challenging times by providing clean, healthy, and safe learning environments to all students and staff. This is another example that the San Bernardino City Unified School District continues to make happen for the San Bernardino community. And remember, we're all in this together.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all again to our viewing audience. We are reconvening from our closed session. And we are now going to report out my computer ready. 4.1 Coordinator Secondary Education Curriculum and Instruction. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following employee Kimberly Simpson, Coordinator Secondary Education Curriculum and Instruction Effective Date, Work Year and Salary, to be determined.
So move.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and second. If there, thank you. If there's no discussion, we'll take the vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina? Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers?
Aye.
And Ms. Rosales Medina, are you on? All right, she might have connectivity issues. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving 4.2, Certified Non-Reelects. Be it resolved that the Board of Education has determined on an individual basis that the following certified employees be given notice prior to March 15th, 2021, that their employment with the district not be renewed for the 2021-2022 school year Pursuit to Education Code 449929.21. And the superintendent or his designee hereby authorized to give written notice of this action prior to March 15th, 2021 Pursuit to Education Code 449929.21, HR Certified 20-21-03. Am I hearing a motion? And I know those there were two that came out if I'm not, if I am correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, Board? Now I'm not hearing a motion. All right. So. It dies. I'm sorry. Yeah, well, yes, that's what I was about to say. So in this case, I am not hearing a motion or not seeing. So I am going to move forward then to 4.2, or I'm sorry, 4.3, Certified Reassignment. Be it resolved that the Board of Education has determined that the following certified employee be given notice prior to March 15th, 2021, that he or she may be released from assignment as a principal effective at the date at the end of the 2021 school year and reassigned to an assignment consistent with his or her credential authorizations effective at the beginning of the 2021-2022 school year. And the superintendent or his designee is hereby authorized to give written notice of this action Pursuit to Education Code 44951, HR Certified 20-21-06. So moved.
Second.
All right, I heard a motion and second. Is any discussion? If not, I will entertain a vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina? Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers?
Aye.
And motion carried. All right, moving on to 4.4 HR Classified 20-21-10 ER. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of charges to suspend without pay for five days the following classified employee from his or her employment with the district, HR Classified 20-21-10 ER. All right, I'm not hearing a motion. I want to make sure.
Move.
Second. All right, I heard a motion and I heard a second. Any discussion? If not, I will entertain a vote at Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina? Don't I back on? Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. All right, we're moving to 5.0 Public Hearing. Acknowledge receipt of the initial request to meet and confer regarding successor negotiation from the Communication Workers of America, CWA, to the district's HR. And I am opening, as you heard. Are there any public comments?
Madam President, there are no comments for this item.
All right, if there are no comments, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move.
It is recommended that the following resolution be adopted. Be it resolved that the Board of Education receives the initial request to meet and confer towards a successor agreement from the Communication Workers of America to the district.
So move.
Second. Okay, I heard a motion and a second. And I will take the vote if there's no discussion. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers?
Aye.
Motion carried. We are now at Public Comments, 6.1. Again, we want to say to our viewing audience and those that are come for public comments, we know we're a little behind, but we definitely want to hear from you. So I am going to read. Public comments is the time during the agenda when the Board is prepared to receive comments from the public within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as policies, regulations, and procedures of the district, comments on programs, services, or operations of the district, or fiscal matters of the district. You may address your comments to be specific items on the agenda. However, this is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the Board on items not on the agenda. Pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order in 2920, dated March 17, 2020, certain requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act are suspended. If you would like to make a live comment at district board meetings, a registration form is required. Forms can be found on the district's website and Facebook. The registration form is available for 24 hours prior to the scheduled Board of Education meetings and will close at 4:30 PM on the day of the meeting. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. All comments submitted on one subject will be provided no more than 30 minutes. A timer will be visible on the screen during your comments. We ask that you monitor your time. Participants are reminded that any inappropriate language or images will forfeit their registration and they will immediately be removed from the meeting. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. All right, we are ready to receive our public comments.
Okay, Madam President, I just wanted to let you know that we do have a few comments for item 11.4, which we will do when we get to that item. All right, the first one is Alicia. Alicia, if you're available, please unmute and activate your camera. Okay, she's not here, Maria saying, okay. The next one is Alfredo Chavez. If you're available, please unmute. He's not there either. Moving on. Kim Alviso, if you're available?
Okay, I'm here.
All right, hello and welcome.
Hello. Hi, I just have to thank everybody for letting me into this meeting and address the Board and everyone else, and I just appreciate that. So good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking my request to comment during this meeting. My son is a senior at Sagrionio High School. My comment is about graduation for the class of 2021. I ask that you would carefully reconsider changing drive-through graduation to socially-distanced graduation with only seniors and their parents or guardian in attendance. An example of that would work would be an entire football field and if needed, the track as well to socially distance the whole class. As you know, our seniors have lost out on one of the most memorable school years of their high school career. With San Bernardino County COVID numbers decreasing and more restrictions are being lifted. And now that sports are conditioning along with football, softball, and water polo, there's testing and there's ways to be safe. I just, I know we want to keep everybody safe, but I want you to look at the numbers and more people are getting vaccinated. I just ask again for you to reconsider giving our seniors something to look forward to. And I just thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Tricia Poole. If you're available, please unmute.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening and welcome.
I'm wanting to speak to you this evening in regards to opening up the schools before the end of the 2020-21 school year due to the ongoing mental health crisis we are now experiencing with our children. I was wondering if the mental health of the district's students is of any importance to the school board. The reason I seem to be questioning it is because I am not seeing any path forward in opening schools before the end of the 2021 school year, even when pediatricians have come forward saying it is imperative that we do so. The mental welfare of these kids is of the utmost importance, being that they are our future and the damage being done to their mental health will have lasting impact and may not be reversible. It has been stated that the school should have been let the last thing to close and the first thing to open. But it has not happened and it does not seem like it will be happening in our district anytime soon. My niece has been hospitalized three times for self-harm and mental stress since the start of the pandemic. And my daughter is on the verge of a full mental breakdown. And I myself have considered taking her to the emergency room for her mental state. They have become introverts with their only link to the outside world and peers their own age is a computer screen or their phone, which we all know is not good for them. They need to be amongst their peers in an in-person setting to develop properly, and we all know this. It's not new. These years are critical to a child's development. My youngest just wants to be with her friends again. Everyone says to follow the science, but no one at the district is listening to these pediatricians, actual doctors of medical science and childhood development. The CDC even states that there is no significant increase in spread in districts that have been in-person learning in comparison to those who don't. So I feel to see why the district is dragging their feet on this issue. Follow the CDC guidelines and open up the schools now. It's not hard. Have the teachers and students who want to learn in person return to school. Those that want to continue distance learning can continue to be taught by teachers that are not ready to come back to the classroom. I know some teachers in other districts have been caught on open mics stating that parents just want their babysitters back. Let me make it abundantly clear that this is not nor has never been the case. Parents have had to witness their children mentally suffering and in many cases regressing socially. We have all heard the stories of loss of life because of the kids. Just couldn't take it anymore. How many have, how many more have to self-harm or end their life before we realize that trying to keep kids safe from a virus as well as faculty has not resulted in keeping them safe? It's just resulted in another pandemic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, and our next speaker is Larry Shackelford. Mr. Shackelford, if you're available, please unmute.
Hello there. Well, it's been a while. It's been a long time, so I'd like to get this out to everybody. Good evening, Board President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, Board Members, Superintendent Volkermer, and Cabinet. How is everybody? It's been a long time.
Great.
But anyway, no, listen, I, I just wanted to take an opportunity because last week during the LCAP meeting, I was out on the road and I was having an altercation with my technology. So I wasn't able to contribute in the breakouts. And I was happy to see that tonight, one of the topics on the agenda is parent engagement. And what I wanted to say in the breakout under, when we were going over Goal Three, which was included stakeholders like myself and our company. I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that, you know, we're committed to trying to figure out how to do more when it comes to, you know, family engagement, right? I mean, we're, you know, we're all doing the best we can and under current circumstances, you know, we all realize the trials and tribulations that we have. But some of the things that we've learned as a program because of COVID has given us opportunities to connect more, you know, more so with the parents that are engaged. And obviously, we'd like to try to engage more of them. Everybody's on that same page. And we do have, you know, great partnerships and collaboration with Ms. Altiveros and the Communications Office and Family Engagement, specifically the Department and with Sandra Valdez and Randall Olson. You know, specifically Sandra comes on to our monthly parent meetings that we have for our program to give the parents updates on family engagement initiatives and things of that nature. And also the CAP staff and, you know, the partnership that we have with Dennis Warman and his crew. And then, you know, that even extends over to Majadi and his team at CYCD. But I just think that there's room for more collaboration. And I don't know if it's, you know, if it's, if it's, you know, a condition that we need to address as a company and as, you know, a partner? Or if there's some, some way that we can work together, right? To just to continue to pull in the same direction when it comes to family engagement. And, you know, unfortunately, I wasn't able to to input that information last week. And I thought that I would just make some comments today. And I was, like I said, I'm just glad that family engagement is on the agenda for tonight. So again, hello, everybody. Miss everybody. And
Thank you.
And thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Valerie Leonardi. If you're available, please unmute.
Thank you. I just unmuted, I hope.
Okay, yes, we can hear you and see you.
I want to say thank you for valuing our community's lives and health as a priority. At this time, there is research that is being produced and that will be discussed at a different time in which they have found that COVID-19 is destructive for children and is harmful to people. I'm grateful that our district has chosen to put students' health as a priority. So while other institutions are making decisions on what they are going to do with their communities in a experimental form. in a experimental form with their community members, I'm grateful that our community is going to be kept safe. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham? You didn't hear me, did you? Sorry.
No.
Sorry, I just realized, sorry. Dr. Anthony Leonardi, if you're available?
Hello. Yes, I'm Anthony Leonardi. I'm a T-cell immunologist who did my work at the NCI and Johns Hopkins. I just had a few things to bring up. I'm really glad you guys took my advice because it turns out some of the major research discussing the effect of the virus on kids and the pandemic on kids in schools, it turns out it was falsified. So this group, they covered up a lot of the kids' deaths in Sweden, and it turns out it was two-thirds greater, so about 68% greater. And it just came to light today. So I think, so really, the scientific community is scrambling right now to kind of reassess the situation. And also, so we've done well being cautious. And, and another thing is, we're going to have vaccines for children soon. It should work pretty well, just as well as in adults, in my opinion. I think kids will need the vaccine, of course, because they're suffering the long, the long COVID and the chronic symptoms that adults are having. So they have high rates of survival, which are in question in some degree. The fatality may be different. It all depends on how they reassess, given the study was kind of falsified. So kids are, so kids are shown to carry a lot of the virus, and many kids, about 10% of them will have chronic symptoms. And so also, the immunologists are finding that unfortunately, and this is a strong possibility, the virus is staying inside the bodies of people that are infected, and they're thinking that the vaccine will help clear it out. And of course, the virus itself, it causes a lot of organ damage to the lungs, heart, kidneys, liver, pancreas, and spleen, and multiple people are affected, I mean, multiple organs are affected. And I also have some other news. So Johns Hopkins just released a study today that basically shows that the virus is airborne. So things like screens, like those screens you put on desks, they're actually associated with greater transmission between people because of the way the, the virus moves, because it's, it's not by droplets, it's airborne. So if you get the virus going up into the air, forward and then up, it just, it spreads easier for some reason. So they showed that, that the schools, the schools were seeding infections in children, and children were then taking it home to their families. And so with more, with more certain types of mitigations or steps that they take to prevent that, they saw differences in the amount of transmission. So, so we've learned that what, a little bit more about what works and what doesn't work, and a little bit more of how dangerous it is for children. So like I said, so this group found, if you look at the real data, it's about two-thirds of an increase in child mortality. But, but that data was not included. And there were email correspondences between these researchers, and they chose not to include it. So it is a bit of a scandal, what happened. And I think we need to continue monitoring this, and I think, I definitely still think kids will need the vaccine. And that's everything, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and our current last comment is from Kate. Kate, if you're available, please unmute. And I see that she is not here. And at this time, that's all the comments until we get, until we get to 11.4. All right, thank you, Ms. Cunningham. We will now move to 7.0, Reports and Comments by Union Organization. 7.1, San Bernardino Teachers Association.
Good evening, President Rogers, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, President Rogers, members of the board, Superintendent Volkermer, and Cabinet. I am Ashley Peters Alcala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, and I am speaking to you tonight on behalf of the 3,000 members of SBTA. Later this evening, the board will be voting on the charter renewal application for Savant Prep Academy. Due to the unprecedented nature of the current pandemic, there still remain numerous health and safety concerns for the board to consider in relation to the renewal and the current facilities agreement that have yet to be addressed. We urge the board to carefully consider this decision as it will have an impact on our district staff and students. Since the board last met, the COVID case numbers have continued to decline within our county and our district. However, we are still in the purple tier, which means that there is still widespread cases throughout our school district. I would also like to point out that the number of cases amongst children ages five to 19 within our district increased by approximately another 1,000 cases, new cases since January 19th. Cumulatively, there are now 5,286 children who have tested positive for COVID since last March, with 4,000 of these new cases coming since November. There have also been numerous articles written about the increase in children with COVID being hospitalized and diagnosed with what's called multi-inflammatory syndrome in children, or MISC, which is a serious illness that affects approximately 13% of total cases of COVID amongst children nationwide. Just this week, actually, a few hours ago, the National Institute of Health established a new research effort to understand how SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID-19, affects children. And we are still learning about the new highly contagious variants of this virus and how they are currently spreading in our own community. The bottom line is this, we are still not by any means at the end of this pandemic, and there is still so much that we do not know about how the virus affects people of all ages and what the long-term effects will be. Yet in spite of this, the state has presented new legislation and regulations for the districts to return to in-person learning. Also, over the weekend, a third vaccine has now been approved by the United States for distribution to, to battle COVID. But up until last week, San Bernardino County was making it difficult for our employees to get vaccine appointments. We are very thankful that through the district's diligence, they have been able to partner with St. Bernardino's to provide vaccines for employees in addition to being able to access the county vaccine sites as well. And I know that many of our employees were able to access the Royal Valley site, there's just this in the past few days. We still believe that the vaccine provides an extra layer of protection that no amount of masking, ventilation, and distancing can ensure. And I would also like to point out that just because schools that are open aren't leading to substantial community transmission, that doesn't mean that there still is an individual risk to teachers and staff. And as I have said to the board before, it is imperative that we continue to look at our local context, our COVID community transmission rates, and current scientific knowledge and guidance that we have in order to make informed decisions. Now is not the time to change course. COVID is still a highly contagious airborne virus with lasting effects. We are still in the purple tier, and the only way to ensure safety amongst our students, employees, and families is to continue with distance learning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. 7.2, California School Employees Association. Is there a representative?
Yes, this is Vanessa.
Welcome, hello.
Hi. Good evening, President Rogers, board, staff, and community. My name is Vanessa Messis. I'm the chap, I am Chapter 183's Sergeant-at-Arms and a campus security officer for the district. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. CSCA Chapter 183 would like to acknowledge and thank all the classified staff who have continued to work from home, as well as those who are being called to work on campuses or at the district buildings to support and carry out the needs of the district, some of whom have, have been deemed essential to work at their sites and have continued physically working on the site since the pandemic started. And California's executive safer-at-home order was issued almost a year ago. We CSCA staff like nutrition services, print staff, M&amp;O payroll, and our classified school police staff who have worked out of the station. Additionally, since the start of the 2021 school year in August, custodians, IT, many secretaries and clerks have been working at the sites as needed. As the start of 2021, year, New Year, and the decade has come, the second half of the school year has started up, vaccines begin to roll out, and we approach the one-year mark of the US and world shutdown, we have seen many new changes and have, and have a new understanding of how we, of how we can function as a society with COVID. We have seen COVID rates go up, go down, hospital rates, positive cases. Now we see cities and counties slowly allowing businesses to open up, and some people taking the risk to test waters of safety in the public and venture out from the safety of their own homes. Trying not to fear, but always feeling a bit on the defense, not knowing at the time, at this time, they'll be exposed and bring something back to their family, but wanting to feel a kind of normalcy and human again, trusting that the leaders and the numbers are telling us, or trusting what the leaders and the numbers are telling us. Each school district is, in the state, now finds themselves in a peculiar place, weighing the evidence and the numbers against the needs of its students' education and staff safety. We have, we have had sports conditioning started, and I need to bring back more classified staff physically to the campuses as time goes on, like the call for the CSOs to go back to campuses in February to support meal distribution, sports conditioning, and the Royal Valley High Vaccination Site, as well as all the custodians coming back full-time at their regular shifts starting tomorrow. As many changes come out from our national and local leaders, we hope, we hope at CSCA that this district continues to look out for all and continues to weigh the risks and evidence throughout our county, city, and district before making decisions that could pull families into an even harder hardship. By now, this pandemic has touched so many people that just about anyone you've talked to can say they had a close friend, family member, or even maybe themselves who tested positive for COVID, and possibly that person was hospitalized or passed away from this horrible virus. We know this virus is still out there and may lead to other serious conditions that may still, that may stay with that person for months, years, or possibly their entire life. It continues to challenge and test the health department and science boundaries. So we need to stay conscious and diligent with all the guidelines put forth like wearing masks, washing hands, and social distancing by staying at least six feet apart as if we were back in time a year ago. Please protect, to protect ourselves and others as this unknown time continues to infiltrate our lives daily. To conclude, I hope everyone continues to stay safe, and we keep pushing ourselves to do the right thing to protect everyone around us and ourselves. Thank you for your time and stay safe and healthy.
Thank you. 7.3, Communication Workers of America. Is there a representative?
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board and Cabinet members. Good evening, this is Teresa Hunter with CWA Local 9588, area vice president. We accept and acknowledge that the board is in receipt of CWA's request to meet and confer, and we look forward to bargaining on behalf of our certificated guest teachers for our 2021 through 2024 contract. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, 7.4, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. Is there someone here tonight? All right, I'm not hearing or seeing anyone. We'll now move to 8.0, Presentations. 8.1, Administrative Report, Annual Audited Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Business Services?
Thank you, President Rogers. Board, as you know, each year, as part of the budget cycle, we go through an audit process to make sure that our, our systems and our procedures are up to standard, and then each year, you're given a report. And so I'm going to turn it immediately over to Janie, who's going to introduce our guest speaker for this evening.
Good evening, board. I'm going to turn this over to our lead auditor. You've met her several times, Shiloh Gorosbi from ID Bailey. Are you on the line, Shiloh?
I am here, can you all hear me?
Great, yes, thank you.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here tonight. I will just take a little bit of your time to go over the audit report for the district for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2020. And as always, I'm open to any questions that you may have following the presentation. And so tonight, hopefully, you will receive the report and have had a chance to look it over. I'll touch on some of the highlighted key pages that I think are important for, for you as board members to, to take a look at. And as I mentioned, then, then open it up for questions. And of course, our audit report always starts with our Page One, which is our independent auditor's report itself. This is where we are providing you with assurance regarding whether the financial statements are materially stated based on our audit. And so the report tonight is an unmodified opinion. And if you've heard me mention this before, an unmodified opinion is a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that we can provide in an audit, and it does mean that the financial statements as presented are materially stated based on our audit. And in addition to the report on the financial statements, if you were to turn to Page 116 of the audit report, and if you're following along with an electronic version, I believe that would be your PDF page 123, but report Page 116. This is a summary of auditor's results. So in addition to the opinion on the financial statements themselves, there are three other reports that I'll summarize for you in tonight's packet. The first being our report on the internal control over financial reporting. This report is not an opinion on internal controls, rather, the goal of the report is to provide the board with information that might come to our attention during our audit that, that would indicate control deficiencies that we would classify as either a material weakness or a significant deficiency. And so that report tonight is, there are no material weaknesses identified, and there are no reported significant deficiencies. So that report is, is a clean report with no, no items to note. In addition to that internal control report, we have two other reports. The federal awards is our report related to compliance and internal controls over your federal program expenditures. And in this portion of the audit, we, we look at specific programs that we are required to look at based on criteria. Your larger-dollar programs will tend to be part of that process. And so this year, we were looking at your Title I program that includes the school, includes, excuse me, the school improvement funding as well as Title II Part A, which is the supporting effective instruction. And in that report, we're happy to report no non-compliance as well as no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the report, excuse me, in the internal controls over compliance. So a clean report from your federal program audit as well. And then the last is your state. And then the last is your state compliance report, and that report is dictated by the Department of Education and State Controller's Office. They determine what programs each year are subject to audit, things such as your attendance, your duplicated pupil count, your instructional minutes and instructional days, and a variety of other programs that you offer. Generally, things that are attached to funding or dollars for the district. And so this report is a compliance report that is unmodified as well, meaning we had no findings to report under your state programs. So good news overall for the June thirty two thousand twenty audit. The pages that follow the summary of auditor's results, if there were any of those types of findings that I just described to you, they would be reported in pages the following pages. So you can see each of those indicated with none noted. And then, of course, during the course of our audit, we do look at other items, including your A S Bs. That's one of those components that we we still continue. We know it's important for the board. And we still continue to look at all your A S Bs each year and provide observations and recommendations in our separate letter that is addressed to management, starting on page one hundred and twenty one. And that said, the other piece of the report that I do, well, not the report itself, but the other component to our report to use a governing board or communication is the separate letter that you have that is a different, a separate PDF, and hopefully you have that one as well, dated February twenty sixth as well. And this communication letter is really our opportunity to provide you with some insight, maybe things that are outside the bound report that we think are important to bring to your attention. Some of those topics include, are we independent of you? And we, of course, have to be independent of the district in order to be able to perform the audit. And we like to bring to attention that we evaluated that independence and we have made sure we are independent. We communicate that to you in this letter. Other items would be, were there difficulties encountered during the audit? You know, I have to say that auditing in a COVID world was not easy, but that's not the difficulty that that we're really referring to here. This would be things such as, you know, was management responsive? Were they providing us the things we needed? Do we have those types of difficulties? We would want you to know that. Did we have any disagreements with management? Those would be things we would want to report to you. So there's no nothing in that letter that you need to be concerned about. It's our standard letter with no issues to report specifically to you as a result of our audit procedure. And with that, I think I will go ahead and turn it back to you if there are any questions.
All right, I am seeing Ms. Rosales Medina, and then followed by will be Mr. Tillman.
Thank you for the report. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. So thank you for the report. I know that you've, the company has done this for the past, I'm not sure how many years, and they've always given us a report. I was wondering, how thorough or how deep do you go into the audit process? Maybe during the pandemic and COVID, what was, what did you do differently, maybe? Or or I'm just trying to find out what was the process this year?
Sure. So our audit standards require us, under any circumstances, whether we were in person or remote, to obtain all the evidence we need to finish our audit. So from the standpoint of the type of documentation, the risk assessment processes, the the supporting documentation that we need to look at to validate any of the numbers that we're auditing, nothing changed. How we went about doing that and how we received that information is what changed, you know, quite a bit. And it took a huge effort on the district's part to really commit to that process. So when we would provide lists of items that we needed for the audit, if you can imagine, the district's Fiscal Services Department would, we did it a couple of different ways, depending on the volume of documents we were requesting. Sometimes those documents were put in boxes and we came in, you know, picked up boxes, reviewed those documents, and then returned the boxes. Other times it was the district would scan documents into the system and provide them to us. There's a lot of things that we do request that are already electronic, spreadsheets and worksheets that the district provides in Excel. Those things are easy, easily emailed. Actually, not even emailed anymore. We have a secure data exchange portal that the district's able to upload all files to our portal so that we can do document exchange in that fashion. So I would say that the 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 depth of the work didn't change, but how we received that information changed. And I and I think I speak for everybody when I say there was probably a lot more time on both sides in filtering through those requests in in an electronic fashion. It was a challenge, but we definitely made it through and and, you know, we, it probably took us a little longer than we normally would, but but we have our standards we have to uphold, so. We couldn't go. I'm sorry?
Were you able to conduct interviews? I know was part of, that's been part of your process previously, so I wasn't sure if you were able to do interviews this time around?
Yes. Everything we did was, you know, when we had interviews or talked to folks, it was via Zoom, phone calls and things like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Tillman?
So the name of your company?
I Bailey.
And how many years have you done the audit for us?
So I, well, myself, I'm actually, I've actually just finished my sixth year. And if we and I won't be able to continue on the audit next year. So every six years we have to rotate and and switch out the team. So so I wouldn't be on the audit anymore after this year. Personally, six years. You know, we were V T D before we were I Bailey, and so there was another partner who was on the audit before me. And I don't know the history of how far back that goes, but as I mentioned, myself, six years. Next year, you won't see me.
Well, I was I was getting excited for a minute because I thought you weren't ready to try today.
Oh, well, I'll tell you what, you know, the
You've been using it for so long. So I think I really think we should swap it out, Ms. Christakis. We don't want to use the same firm because, you know, sometimes you get complacent. It's good to bring in new people that'll see different things, just as a suggestion for audit.
Yeah.
And then on the items for A S B, there are a lot of items there. Ms. Christakis, are we doing things with training in A S B and oversight?
Yes, Mr. Tillman. In fact, they are down, our findings were down significantly this year. Most of those are just part of the processes of setting up fundraisers and doing the the revenue projections and then closing them out. And so they have gone down significantly. Again, it seems like a lot because the board asks the auditors to audit all A S Bs. And in most districts, it's certain, certain school sites. So yes, they do get training, and we will continue to follow up and try and get those numbers down even further.
You follow up on these issues that have been
Yes.
comes to light. And then I just want to tell the board, it is a big deal that we don't have any findings. That's really pretty amazing. When you do audits, concerns are in the findings. And to have an audit this clean, I haven't seen one this clean in a long time. I absolutely know findings. So I want to commend the district staff for doing a great job and keeping our finances safe.
Absolutely. I concur, Mr. Tillman. It is always nice to get a clean audit. So we want to continue to move forward in that direction. So thank you so much, Shiloh. Unfortunately, you said we won't be seeing you, but then again, that will break up, you know, some of our consistency.
Okay. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Christakis, is there anything else under you there? Is that wrapped?
Thank you, Shiloh. And thank and thank the team, Jim Cunningham and his team.
Absolutely. Ditto. Ditto again to the district. We appreciate your hard work. Eight point two, Family Engagement Update.
And thank you, President Rogers. And before I make my introductory comments, I also want to thank Ms. Christakis and her team. This is a huge undertaking. We have a lot of money in the district, and keeping it safe and managing it well is no easy task. And I want to thank them deeply for their diligence in terms of keeping keeping the district in a good place. So Board, tonight, we're pleased to be able to bring you an update on our efforts to improve family engagement within the district. And we know this is an area of great interest and strong priority for the board. Within the presentation this evening, you'll see a degree of retooling and innovation to address family engagement in new ways. What we're really trying to do is dispel some old ideas about what engagement is. And the question we ask ourselves frequently is, can a parent or a guardian that, for whatever reason, cannot physically come to school or be part of a district committee or just just grace us with their physical presence, can they still be fully engaged in the education of their child or children? And the answer has to be yes. While we very much appreciate the parents and guardians who come to school and volunteer in district committees, we also have to recognize that some of our families just can't participate in this manner. Therefore, we are tasked as a school district and as an administration with finding ways to make this engagement happen in in different ways. So we're excited to share our new family strategic plan with you this evening and the efforts that are underway. Want to give a shout out to Dr. Sandra Rodriguez and Director Beatrice Gonzalez and their teams for their efforts to date and their commitment to a long range improvement in this very, very critical area. So Sandra, with that, I think I'm turning it over to you.
Actually, we're going to turn it over to Rachel first.
Oh, for our basics. Yeah. Great. Thank you, Dr. Menares, please.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. If we could pull the presentation up for our board and community. We go. All right. So I want to thank Board President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, Board Members, Community Staff, Dr. Volkmer, and Cabinet for being a part of this Family Engagement Update. You will be happy to hear all the different work that's been going on this school year. Next slide, please. So I am just opening up, we're going, we are going to review our COVID nineteen data to date, review the process to revise the Family Engagement Strategic Plan and showcase the the plan itself. Then Dr. Rodriguez will present how the Family Enga-, how Family Engagement Office provides support to families during the pandemic, what they've been doing that this right now, really a lot of above and beyond. And then finally, there will be a video featuring family engagement in action. Next slide, please. A quick recap of last board meeting. Board, you held a public hearing and approved an M O U memorandum of understanding with our Teacher Association, San Bernardino Teachers Association, to facilitate distance learning through the COVID nineteen school closures. S B C U S D has resumed athletic conditioning, and the board will allow competition when local conditions meet state guidelines. Staff and student participation must be voluntary in these athletic feats. And then finally, S B C U S D hosted an Operation Student Recovery on February twenty third, focusing on reconnecting a record one thousand chronically absent students with their schools. And at the board meeting, we requested some volunteers that were recruited. And so that those are the recaps from the last board meeting. Next slide, please. So Board, just to keep putting this in front of everybody, you have taken ownership of these reopening guiding principles. And first and foremost, your decisions are based on ensuring health and physical safety of students and staff while adhering to federal, state, and county guidance, providing high quality learning experiences. And so tonight, again, you will hear about the family engagement side of that high quality learning experience while ensuring that our staff have safe and accessible working conditions. Those continue to be your guiding principles. Next slide, please. Board, we continue to stay in Phase One at this moment, distance learning only, where we are offering online instruction. The district as a whole continues to prepare for potential Phase Two, which would be some small cohorts of in-person learning opportunities when you deem it safe to do so based on our local context of COVID rates. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Betier so he can give you updates on our most recent COVID rates to date, specific to the county, but also San Bernardino City Unified. Mr. Betier, you're on. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Dr. Menares, and good evening, Board, Cabinet, and Community. As you probably know, we're making movement in the right direction with COVID cases. In the latest reporting period, February fourteenth through the twentieth, our county is still in the widespread tier with nine new cases daily per one hundred thousand residents. The city of San Bernardino was over fifteen new cases. And within our district boundaries, we saw twelve point nine new cases daily per one hundred thousand. As it relates specifically to children ages five through eighteen during this reporting period, there were thirty nine new cases reported within our district boundaries, down from fifty five new cases the previous week. As it relates to testing, the county is seeing a drop in people getting tested. Based on the state's testing criteria, San Bernardino City is required to perform eight hundred and forty four tests a day and is above that, averaging nine hundred and forty six tests a day. Our district continues to host free testing with our partners at Borrego Health each Wednesday in our Board of Education parking lot from one thirty to four P M. Our next one's tomorrow, and testing is still highly encouraged. Now I'll provide you an update on the vaccine rollout. Next slide, please. So vaccines are slowly becoming more available. Our incident management team receives regular updates and are being told availability should increase over the next few months with the addition of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, receiving the emergency use use authorization. Within the past two weeks, we've actively participated with San Bernardino County Department of Public Health, Arrowhead Regional Medical Center, St. Bernardino's, and Loma Linda University Hospitals to make sure any district employee wishing to get vaccinated is able to. We're happy to report that over one thousand employees have received at least their first dose through these locations. Over three hundred employees were able to get vaccinated today at a Royal Valley High School. We do believe many more employees are making appointments on their own outside of these offerings. At the local level, within San Bernardino City, there have only been twenty one thousand vaccines administered. While the vaccine doses increase daily, we believe it's still going to be several months well into the summer before the public at large, including our families and children, are able to be vaccinated. As you heard earlier, trials are still underway for the use of COVID vaccines on children. We do encourage our families and employees wishing to get vaccinated to register at the link on the screen, W W W dot S B COVID nineteen dot com forward slash vaccine to get notified and make appointments. We will continue these partnerships and message out in the upcoming weeks and months. Thank you for your time this evening.
Next slide, please.
So I I want to thank the board for your continued dedication and urgency around including our families in our rollout and in everything that we do. And I'm just really so privileged to be able to serve in student services. Working with families is is a joy, and it's something that I love to do. And I just thank you for the opportunity to be able to to serve in this capacity, working with our families in our district. Our director is unable to be here with us tonight, so I will be presenting the Family Engagement Strategic Plan. Next slide.
Dr. Rodriguez, if you just pause one moment on the previous presentation, Mr. Tillman, you had a question for?
I do. For Mr. Betier, do we have any numbers and are we tracking how many district personnel are getting vaccinated?
No, Mr. Tillman, because it's because it is a, you know, personal medical decision, and we're not controlling the process. Many folks are able to get vaccinated just by going online now on their own and making their own vaccine appointments. So we haven't got to the point yet where we have a good substantiated number about how how many employees have it. We do field a lot of emails and calls, so we know that there's a lot of desire to get them out there and are doing our best to point people into the right direction.
But you say you don't have information to the point. So is there ever going to be a time where we try to decide or ascertain how many staff have been vaccinated?
I think there could be a time, you know, moving forward, we would have to work with our unions and H R to determine what that process may look like moving forward as far as how to request that information.
And 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 are, do we know what the do we know what the wait time is now if an employee wanted to be vaccinated? And have we given them all the links to where they can get vaccinated? And if And if we are, do we know how long it takes to get vaccinated after they go online and request a vaccine?
So the time varies. I'll tell you, today, we were able to get folks in same day. So they were emailing us, asking us where to go. We were able to get them appointments within the county using many of the vaccination sites, including Royal Valley, and then received follow-up emails saying, you know, thank you, we were able to get in today. So that's the experience that we had just this week alone.
And the time period that it takes for total vaccination for Pfizer is how long?
I believe it's 21 days between the first and the second dose.
And then after the second dose, you're supposed to wait how long before it's considered fully vaccinated?
I believe it's about 90 days, but I'm not 100% sure on that.
Can you find out? Because that's a big deal also?
Yes.
I don't think it's 90 days. You said 90?
Yes.
I think it's two weeks, because I took Pfizer.
Yeah, so, but that's important, because when we look at doing anything in terms of allowing staff to come back to sites, or even, you know, if we're going at this rate and we're looking at doing a graduation where the students associate distance, but we're able to have staff who've been vaccinated come back and help facilitate, then knowing that we have a substantial number of staff that are vaccinated does make a big difference. And we put it out there for the, I know we're doing virtual distance learning, but I know for instance, if there are teachers that are vaccinated and they're considered fully vaccinated, I know someone wanted to teach from the classroom. And then if they are, I don't know where it's going to end up going with the students, but in terms of, you know, end of the year, and then just bringing folks back at any point, just for even just small group stuff, I think the vaccine is the key in terms of allowing our staff to come back. So it'd be good to know where we're at in terms of number of staff that have been vaccinated. And I guess for the simplest thing, which would be, if we're going to look at doing some type of distance graduation. Dr. Volkmer, can we agendize that and have some discussion on whether that's feasible or possible? And, you know, how we would space something like that out? Because I agree, I mean, our seniors, this year's seniors have been through a worse time than I think the previous year's seniors, because at least those seniors got some time in class, right? And got some time to interact with each other. So this has been the worst year of all. So if we could find a way to actually do an in-person graduation with vaccinated staff and being safe to have students, find some way to do students associate distance, I think we should agendize that and have that discussion. And I want to thank the staff for being excited and proactive about getting vaccinated. I know I talked to Ashley last week. I found a place that had a few openings and they, I mean, they filled it up to capacity in no time. It wasn't a whole lot of space, but just to know that the staff wants to and that they're eager to get that level of protection, so we all can come back as soon as possible and do things in person. That's where everybody's heart is, I know that for a fact. And we can do it the right way, and I think that's what our district is doing. So if we can figure out a way to, even if it's involuntary, to have people just go to a site, Mr. Vittier, and say, on a volunteer basis, I've been vaccinated, just so we can get counts, I think it'd be a big help. Thank you.
And I'm sure our Dr. Volkmer will talk more about the graduations, some things they've been working with the principals in his update. All right, all right, we are back, Dr. Rodriguez.
Madam President.
Okay, wait a minute, I see, yes, I see something there for you, Dr. Flores, yes.
I concur with Mr. Tillman. I think we need to discuss, agendize it, Madam President, so that we can have that discussion. I know that our resolution was, you know, we wouldn't return until we deemed it safe for everybody's health. And so now we have to have that discussion and, you know, discuss also for small cohorts, I think we had in there, and also for special needs kids. We need to add that to it. So thank you.
Thank you.
When it's deemed safe, and what is it? What, and what are the criteria for when it's deemed safe?
Okay, yes, I hear you. Mr. Tillman was talking to Dr. Volkmer, but thank you for acknowledging me.
You're the one that constructs the agenda. So, and Dr. Volkmer takes direction from the Board.
Thank you. All right, we are moving forward with the, wait, let me double check, okay, there's no more questions in there. All right, this time for Dr. Rodriguez.
All right, thank you. And so we really do understand the importance of having families who are engaged. And as we look at research, we can see, based on that research, that students whose families are engaged have a higher rates of literacy acquisition. They earn better grades, they enroll in higher level like honors courses, they are more apt to be promoted, they send school on a regular basis, and they graduate and go on to higher education. And so the research is there that proves that when we have parents as partners, equal partners in the education of their children, great things happen. Next slide, please. So as the district has kind of evolved with its different leaders within family engagement, we've really worked over the last year to work on how do we create a plan that's really more indicative of the needs of this district and incorporating the people in which whatever decisions and plan include those people that it affects. And so as we've developed this new strategic plan, which we're calling 2.0, we've had many people involved in this process. From people from the family engagement centers, community members, our different leaders from our parent advisories, district representatives. And this process took over almost, I mean, almost a year. And so in talking with different stakeholder groups, getting them involved in posting on social media, really trying to get the word out, because we wanted to have as many voices as possible as we were updating this plan. The feedback that was given back in those comments that were provided to us through QR codes, direct links, actual verbalized feedback, were incorporated into the subsequent drafts of this plan and in the iterations as they proceeded. And we also verified our work in this plan on how did it compare to best practices in evidence-based research. This was led by parents, because we really, this involves parents. It was led by parents, and it was crucial to have their voice throughout the entire document. Next slide, please. So the new plan, 2.0, features seven strategies. And these strategies are as follows. How do we support schools and departments in their desires to increase family engagement? How do we support families of targeted support groups, looking at our student groups? Strategy three, how do we evaluate our family engagement? How do we know that it's working? Strategy four, how are our family engagement centers operating? And we'll talk a little bit more about what that is and what that looks like. Strategy five, looking at our family university and expanding its course offerings. Strategy six, in developing a family leadership capacity. And what we have learned through our feedback is that parents want more workshops and more information about how they can build family efficacy. And strategy seven, which I believe is very near and dear to this Board, is how are we holding our contractors accountable? And how are they being held accountable and monitored for positive results? Next slide, please. So strategy one, as I mentioned earlier, focuses on sites and departments. And so what we have done in supporting them is helping with, especially during this time of the COVID crisis, is how are we helping families so that they can engage in distance learning? And so we've provided support to our school sites in helping our parents access technology and their connectivity. We've provided workshops and classes around Google platform and digital citizenship. We've also provided a multitude of workshops around how do we get students or parents more involved in the parent portal so they can see how their students are doing? We've supported sites in providing some additional workshops around mental health and physical health with providing workshops on vaping. We have a partnership with UC Riverside in providing health and nutrition courses. We have a partnership with Victor Community to provide mental health supports. We've also worked on working with our schools on how do we improve college and career readiness from preschool all the way to high school, providing different workshops and providing resources to families, providing them information through a partnership with Cal State San Bernardino and UC Riverside around A3G FAFSA workshops provided by Valley College, as well as working with our preschoolers, students who are coming, before they actually come into school, working on their early literacy with our partner in Footsteps to Brilliance, as well as working with all families of K through three on reading and math through Imagine Learning. We've also mobilized our resources to support students who are having issues with chronic absenteeism. And so we have had our partners work with us in providing more home visits when the district was unable to do that, to really get kids more engaged in school and to really find out why they have not been able to come to school on a regular basis. And then finally, the family engagement office has been working with our enrollment. We know that enrollment is important. We know that when students are in school and they're going to be hopefully engaged in learning. And so family engagement has helped our parents to better understand the enrollment process. Next slide, please. Strategy two, in looking at how we are supporting our families and targeted student groups. As you see here, we have identified some student groups, African-American, English learner, Latinx, Pacific Islanders, homeless and foster, special education, and preschool. And so the family engagement has been working in collaboration with our exit department to provide some support for their D-AAC, providing support in building our APACs at school sites, helping to provide some incentives around perfect attendance, working with providing mentoring and tutoring for our various student groups. We've been working with some of our partners like Akoma in providing college nights for our African-American students and really just trying to do a variety of different supports. But we're really proud of the work with our preschoolers. As we know, you know, when we're talking about college and being academically ready, that doesn't start when students go to school. It happens before they even get there. And so the work that's coming from our early childhood development program as it partners with Footsteps Brilliance, really trying to work on increasing the literacy skills of our students even before they come to school. Next slide, please. One of the other things that we were looking at is how do we really know what it is that our families need? And you need to ask the families. And so we've asked, we've asked all district families, but we've gotten responses from over 7,000 families around what they want to see in family engagement. What are some of the types of workshops? What are some of the different resources that they want? And so what they've said is they want programming around family efficacy. And basically, that is how can they be a better parent? And how can that family unit be strong? And so some of our programming that we have has been really targeted to that. We've also worked on having our principals look at that data so that they understand what the parents at their particular school sites need, so that we don't offer canned programs for our parents, but that the needs of parents based on data is being followed through by our site leaders. And over this pandemic, truly, our site leaders understand the importance of our families being engaged. Right now, our parents are the ones who are helping our students be online. And so we need to do a better job listening to what their needs are. And another thing that we're very proud about is that family engagement as a whole now is part of this school plan for student achievement. So every school will be using Panorama Family Survey to inform how they will be operating and providing support to families. That's something that's never been done before. Next slide, please. In strategy four, the Board has been very supportive of family engagement centers throughout the school district. And because of COVID and our site closures, we've had to find ways to support all of our school sites. And so we really looked at a cluster model. So our family engagement centers are at high schools. And so what we have done is restructure so that those family engagement centers become a hub for providing parent education and parent support and resources to all the schools that feed into that high school. And we have been collaborating with our various sister divisions to find out how we can better support our families based on the things that they see that they need. In student services, our responsibility is to support the instructional program of educational services, and we can only do that in collaboration with them. And so we have worked to find out how we can better support our families. And we've done a better job with communicating and posting information on our website as well as working to provide more information on social media. And so we're really proud that we've actually been able to offer parent workshops on Facebook Live this year. We've also worked on restructuring how we are providing support. And so we know that during this crisis, families are in need of childcare, they're in need of devices, food, housing, healthcare, et cetera. And so we've mobilized our resources within the district and with our partners to be able to meet the need of our families. Next slide, please. The other strategy we have is family university. And family university has been around for a long time, and it's one of the signature programs in family engagement. And basically, it is to help them navigate the district's programs and understand how they can utilize the resources that the district offers and help them to really be that leader within their school community. It also helps them to provide information about how they might get a job and learn some job skills. And so as we look forward to some of our next steps, you'll hear about how we're going to expand our family university, which we've heard from many of our parents, they love, and we actually are offering it on a regular basis within our centers. Next slide, please. Strategy six is around our parent advisories. And we have four parent advisories, as you all know. Our Special Education Advisory Committee, our District Advisory Council, our District African-American Parent Advisory Council, and our English learner advisory committee. And so all of these advisories are now hosted out of family engagement. And so we are able now to provide more support to those families outside of what the division, or I'm sorry, that the department offers, because they're all housed in one place. In addition to that, we've also worked on providing some opportunities to build leadership capacity within our parent advisories. And we're really proud of working with Dr. Nikki Elliott with our Mindful Leaders Trainer of Trainers Project, where we're training our parent leaders to be, to be able to provide additional training to our parents. And so we've gotten great feedback from the Mindful Leaders Project, where our families are just so thankful that they're able to work through some of their own trauma and really be mindful about how they lead their family and how they um and how they set the tone, whether it's gonna be a calm tone or one that's gonna be of frustration and anxiety. Um and they're really working on how they can uh help themselves and be that um barometer and set the tone of their of their home. We've also provided support to um ETSA in the uh African American Task Force as well as the Latino um Task Force and providing support to um our different uh parenting groups as well as working with our LCAP committees, so that uh parent engagement is on the forefront of everything that we do. Doctor, Ms. Rogers, did you want me to pause for a moment or continue?
You know, I was following your, I I don't, I I don't. Yeah, I know you got a couple of more that's part of this, this whole comment.
Okay, I'm almost done.
But I do see it. I I see the comments.
Okay, so do you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Okay, next slide, please. So this is something that um that we hear from the board and uh and we've listened. And that is that we need to have a better way to monitor our vendors. And so we are meeting in family engagement. Our director meets with each vendor uh once a month to talk and and review our contract goals and objectives, to make sure that they have the resources that they need to provide the the work that we need from them, as well as getting some feedback uh from the family engagement director to the various vendors and also hearing from our vendors about what are some of the things that they're hearing that the parents need. We've also are working on monitoring um the performance of our student or parents or the participating students whose parents are in the program to align whether it's making a difference. Because we know the research says that when families are engaged, it's going to yield academic progress. And so any parent whose student is enroll or who is attending our parent education, we are monitoring those students to see is there an increase in attendance, grades, et cetera. And then we've also aligned all of our vendors to um have outcomes in the family engagement survey. So it's no longer just a sign-in sheet. We actually need to hear the from the parents and we want to um actually get them engaged and to complete that family survey. And so the onus now is not only on the district to get the survey completed, but also our vendors can be a true partner in making sure that we're able to find out if the parents are, um if it's making a difference for them. Next slide, please. So at this time, we have four vendors in our uh district that we work with family engagement. And so we have a Blue Educational Foundation. And their their work is around a family engagement for African American families. They also provide college advising um in parent workshops, so that parents understand the process for college admissions as well as um understanding the qualifications and requirements for them. And we've also uh contracted with them to to help us to reestablish our APACs in some of our campuses that have high populations of African American students. We understand that um that our African American um student group has been one that's been challenging. And that's why we've contracted uh with Blue to be able to support those efforts. And so we understand that it's also it's challenging for everyone. Um but they have been making a concerted effort to engage families. We also contracted with Educational Achievement Services. And their work is primarily around family efficacy. And many of board members have attended um the workshops and have been very complimentary to the work that the parents are are receiving or the in- information that they're receiving. Uh they concentrate um in their the family leadership institutes um that uh are being provided through Educational Achievement Services. And they provide um leadership, outreach, navigation of the um educational system. But more than anything is to really provide the support within the family dynamic to create uh wellness, wholesomeness, and and really trying to not repeat um mistakes of of the past. And so really taking a different type of approach on how to uh get families to change and to want better and to work on themselves. And so that program um is really focused on parent workshops. We've also uh contracted with ICUC, Inland Congregations United for Change. And this group um again is is focused on uh family engagement support, but really looking at how do they help families um from various backgrounds. Specifically, they usually target our English learners around how they can uh navigate the system and help their child um accessing different resources um around as far as um DACA, uh the Dream Act, and for some of our undocumented students. As well as just navigation and advocacy on their parent rights, which is one of the components of the overall family engagement um framework. Um they also concentrate on workshops. And then our last vendor that we have is Loma Linda Chews, which is the Community Health Education Workers. And those um are aligned to our clusters. And this group has has really stepped up to the plate in providing home visits to our uh most at-risk students. They have provided wraparound services for parents, for families who are in who have um issues of alcoholism, homelessness, um uh domestic violence, uh whatever whatever they encounter at the home. Um they're able to provide those supports. And so they're, they have not concentrated on workshops. This has been more about how uh they can connect with families through the home visit and provide resources directly to the family. Our next slide is gonna show you how our vendors are doing. So next slide, please. So as you can see, um all of our vendors are providing services. And as I mentioned, some of them have had um different folk I and um and providing a different uh pro- providing a different service. So you're gonna see with Loma Linda, they have more home visits than in any other group. Well, that's how they provide the service. You're gonna see from um EAS that they have uh probably the most uh families who are attending workshops. That's really what they're focusing on. And our our Blue um has been working with a a challenging um demographic. And so we expect that it may not be where we want it to be, but we're also experiencing challenges with um this student group and to get them engaged. But you do see that they are contacting families and doing those home visits. And they are, we do have people attending workshops. Um and we are retooling and working with this vendor so that we can figure out how we can provide uh more services to um that particular student group. Next slide, please. And so there's so much happening in family engagement, and I know that I talked a lot. Um but we wanted to show you what our families are getting out of um the program.
And Dr. Rodriguez, before before we look at the wonderful part, I'm gonna entertain the questions, and I know after this will be next step. So, Dr. Flores?
Yes, uh I wanna thank you so much for such a great, comprehensive uh presentation, Dr. Rodriguez. You and your team are doing lots of heavy lifting, and so greatly appreciate it. Um I wanted to uh ask, uh request that I, you mentioned Footsteps to Brilliance. I would like us to have a report. Uh I know they collect the data. And you said that we're where our families are engaging more and more. I really would like um, you know, the metrics presented to us uh um or a s- a small presentation, because, I mean, we as a board, um you know, um invested in this, and literacy is very key. And uh I just, and I know it's a preschool to about third grade. Um so I'd like to know how we are implementing it, implementing it in all the different grade levels, you know? I I think they have that data. And secondly, I would like to recommend that if you go back to your chart, the chart that shows all the vendors, can you go back?
The data, sorry.
Data. It would be really helpful to have the raw numbers. And uh, you know, and and also the explanation of what their FO- FOSSI is, you know, what what's their focus uh in terms of, you know, what they're doing, like. You know, I I don't recall for ICUC what their main goal was. I think they were going to be reaching out to families. Uh so I can't really tell how many families they've reached out to and what type of communication, although you did kind of summarize it. Uh and I know that Loma Linda is doing a lot more home visits, I I know that. And I know Blue has worked a lot with um our high school kids um and our African American uh high school kids. So I would like to like just get a a feel for that. And then we've always wanted evaluations. Uh so I I, did you say something about evaluations and I didn't hear it?
I did, you reminded me about that. We do have evaluations after every workshop that parents participate in. And so um it's, we have a QR code where, and every vendor is required to uh provide that to us. It goes directly to family engagement.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, so maybe perhaps we could also get a report later on, um you know, the the evaluations that the participants are providing. So I would, I would appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
President.
Thank you. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yes, no, thank you so much for the presentation. I do appreciate the graph um and and the reporting on that. Um like Dr. Flores mentioned, seeing a little more of the raw numbers um will definitely help. But um that is definitely a good start, so I do appreciate you for doing that. Um going back to my question, um I'm trying to look at which page I saw it in. With regarding, okay, page seventeen, which is the strategy six, parent advi- advisories. Um I do wanna include in there, um back when I was uh started getting involved in the school district as a parent, uh way before I got involved as a school board member. Um I was also part of the GAC, which was the Gate Advisory um Committee for Parents. And um and I know I've mentioned it before with when we had the previous um Assistant Superintendent. Uh for some reason, it always gets lost within the mix, and I and I get it, they, the that's similar to what the CAC was back then, uh was where there wasn't necessarily full leadership with parents and and so that was uh unfortunately, I I didn't put too much focus within the GAC, which is the Gate um Advisory Committee, and put more of the focus into the CAC, because I know with special ed, it was crucial that we got parents engaged. But now that we're moving forward, I do wanna make sure that we do not forget that there is, they probably don't have any parent engagement as of right now. But at one point back when I was the parent, um we were a few parents that were really getting engaged during that time. So I do definitely want to have it included or at least uh listed as part of a a of trying to work into that CAC mode where the parents are starting to get involved as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then let's see here. Um I know that we have started working in creating a an Asian Pacific Islander pa- or a committee. Is that, would that be appropriate in this list as well?
Well, they, these are some of our statutory uh parent advisories. And what we have been doing is uh focusing on our Pacific Islanders this year. We know that covid hit them uh disproportionately. And so we wanted to make sure that we were providing support to a very vulnerable population. Um we started our uh committees and trying to get voice together, and so those are still within um the foundational stage. But the the support that we received from the Pacific Islander community has been just a blessing. Uh they are so appreciative and they feel like finally their voices are being heard. And uh just a wonderful group of of people who are proud of their culture and really want to just be more a part of um the district uh community, so.
I'm glad you mentioned that.
Yeah, I don't know whether we'll end up being a full advisory. Um but definitely, we are uh looking at how we can support um the community better.
Right, and I've tended the graduation ceremonies. I mean, it's amazing. And and I wanted to make sure that we incorporated that um within our school district. So even if it's in the beginning stages, I'm sure that the department will um continue to work with them. Uh so it is, it is extremely important as well to work with them. Um let me see, the other questions I had, which was regarding let me make sure. So within the vendors and goals and intentions, and that's on page nineteen, um does F S F L I, the ed- the EAS?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay, yeah, cuz I I didn't recognize the name. So F L I is under the uh the E I S.
Yeah, so F L I is the program that they offer, but Educational Achievement Services is the uh name of the provider.
Yeah, okay. And then within that, um I was looking at the yell, the orange area, which is the attended workshops. Are we paying per per student or per person uh within these programs? Uh not per per student, because this is more of a parent engagement piece. Or is this um being paid by families contacted? Um wanted to get more clarification on that, cuz I know within the consent item, we have it listed. And I do appreciate you making those details, cuz that makes a big difference, at least for me to try to look at how much each program is charging per per person. Um so I wanted to get clarification on this too as well.
We have um really been uh fortunate with um EAS, that they're charging by the workshops. And so they actually, and I've been in attendance, where they've had over a hundred parents in a workshop consistently. And so if we had to pay by person, it would have been, we wouldn't have been able to provide the service. And so, you know, one of the recommendations that I think we need to consider later on is um I know that we wanna be fiscally responsible with how we're providing, um how we're paying the vendor. But sometimes we end up paying per pupil or per participant. And that ends up being more expensive, and it can serve less people than going to going to the the workshop model. So I think it just really depends on the vendor. Um and so it's not a one-size-fits-all, and so that's something that we need to look at as we do an after-action plan um at the end of the school year to see what worked best for us and how we can retool for the following school year.
I guess if if we're looking at the workshop model, then it would be uh the ranges between a certain amount of parents um per per session, cuz then I I know it could, um we don't want the expectation low, where then they have a few and then getting paid for the workshop model.
Absolutely, and that's why we have to be very cautious around what's the track record. So if we do a workshop and it's consistently four people, uh maybe that's not the best-case scenario. But when we, you're packing it with fifty to a hundred uh parents consistently coming to the series of workshops, we actually get a better bang for our buck when we do that. But again, it just varies from vendor to vendor and from different populations that we're serving.
Right, and then within this chart, I also wanna look at um you know, the ranges of how much is being paid. Like you said, right now with um E I eh, with EAS, they are lumping them in group shops, um workshops. Um and but I know that they are very expensive at the same time compared to the other parent programs. So then, you know, kind of balances itself out. But then I wanna look at, you know, the consistency across the board, you know, how much are we paying for for each student or each parent? And and later on, I do definitely wanna create a standard, um because I know that with their uh different programs, um they offer more services, but then we wanna compensate that. I just don't want um, you know, maybe a program in the future that wants to come in and I may have a great program, but they're extremely expensive. And at the end of the day, I'm coming from back in the Marcelina era of a parent engagement piece, where everything was internal within our own school district. So I really am looking at that as what I wish we had within our school district. I love that these programs are helping us out, but at the end of the day, I wanna see more of our own school district program um created by um, is her name Beatrice, um within our parent engagement. So that way, um they're creating programs that is gonna help not eliminate these um these companies, because they're they're great companies. But at least provide some assistance, so that way um we can do the work as well.
And I love that you're saying that because that's our goal. And so you hope, we will be pu- uh putting forth another contract later on for professional development for our classified um employees who work directly with families. So that we can, after they go through these trainings, that we actually have a place and people that will be ready to re- to receive them and continue that support and parent and continue that support in parent education. And so, you know, our, we would love to be able to have them all work themselves out of a job. Because you're right, you know, we have the capacity within our district to provide these workshops. But we do need to give the opportunity for our people to learn more about how they can better serve. And so that's our, kind of our next step, as we're looking at how do we expand parenting opportunities? Because it's not just a district focus, but every school site should be able to provide what parents need, because they're the best equipped to provide that service.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, no, no, I'm on board with that. Thank you so much for your presentation. Again, like I said, I do appreciate the graph and the consistency with the consent calendar item.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Rodriguez, thank you so much. You and your team did an outstanding job. Just have a couple, couple of questions. One, do we have a partnership with Counter Behavior Health to provide services?
Yes, we actually do. And they contracted with Victor Community. And so, so we contract with the county, the county subcontracts with another, with a vendor. And so we mentioned in the presentation, Victor Community, that's our provider through the county. And they have really been a blessing to provide support to families for mental health.
Wonderful. And I wrote this, but I think you provided the answer. I put down many workshops for parents with tech concerns, challenges. And I'm, I'm just hoping with the workshops we're doing for parents, that one of them is, this is how you help your child with the Chromebook.
Well, yeah, absolutely. And we could do better. We could do more. As we did our OSR one thousand, which was a great success, we did hear from many families that there were issues with connectivity. And so we were able to get computers out, provide hotspots within that day or the very next day, we delivered them to homes. And we do understand that navigating an educational system through a device is, it's not the same. And so we need to do better. And so we will be working on another program called Corner Classroom that hopefully we'll be able to share in the next few weeks through a commercial and some of the workshops to really help our parents better understand how they can support their kids at home.
Wonderful. And, and my last one is a request. And perhaps when you're looking at the raw numbers that Dr. Flores requested, could you also, for the four major, major on a vendor data form, could you also do the ethnicity breakdown of who they are working with? So, you know, so that we could just kind of look to see where emphasis should be placed with which families?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, that's great. But thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Rodriguez, I think we're ready to view.
All right. So many great things happening in family engagement. I'm really so proud of the work that Ms. Gonzalez has put forth as well as her team. These ladies are everywhere in all kinds of meetings, and I'm sure many of you have seen them. They help us with our town halls. They are just an amazing group of, of people who are really dedicated and have a passion for serving families. So if we could go to one of our last slides of the presentation. Let's see, we'll go ahead and, and roll the tape.
Family Engagement has helped me with different resources, sources, resources like bedding, tutoring, et cetera.
Y a mí me ha ayudado mucho involucrarme a la escuela porque he aprendido que hay ayudas y becas para las gentes de bajos recursos.
Many years now, Selena in Family Engagement has been very helpful providing resources in our community. She recently mentioned new additions to the team. While I don't have the pleasure of meeting Michelle in person, I had a few opportunities to speak with her over the phone. And she has been a great help during this difficult distance learning time.
We cannot thank Loma Linda Choose Program and the Family Engagement Department enough. Thanks to their support and the many activities we have daily in place as incentives for our students, our attendance is now averaging over ninety percent daily.
All right. And so as we conclude our presentation, could go to the next slide? There we go. So as we're, as we're continuing to refine and, and get better, you know, we, we say, you know, we're the best at getting better. We want to look at how we can really just take this to the, to a whole nother level. And as I mentioned earlier to Mrs. Rosales Medina, we want to make sure that our paraprofessionals that are working with our parents are trained to be able to provide additional training to our families. We need our teachers to be better informed about the importance of family engagement in their classrooms, principals, and, and really just having a better awareness. Because parent engagement is everyone's responsibility, just like attendances. And we want to work on expanding professional development opportunities for our parents as well, looking at how we can partner with San Bernardino Valley College to provide possible credits for people who go through our family university. And so we're exploring that possibility. As I mentioned earlier, we have actually now have family engagement to be an integral part in the school plan. And so there is more alignment and support, because we know when families are engaged, and engaging does not mean going to meetings. Engagement means being involved in your, your student's academic educational life. And then really focusing on our academics. And so looking at how grit and resilience and really working towards your goals, you're going to accomplish great things. And that's our National Merit Scholar one hundred. And providing support for summer, as we're looking at how are we going to mitigate learning loss? Providing additional tutoring. And we're really excited about our birth to five new program. We're calling it the Academic Crosswalk. And it aligns developmental milestones with academic milestones. And so that we can prepare students to go and have a college-going mindset before they even come to school. So again, thank you so much for the opportunity to serve in Student Services and provide a leadership within the division. Helping our community is my passion. And everyone that is in Student Services, specifically in Family Engagement, has really found this to be a labor of love and service. So thank you again for allowing us to present to you our Family Engagement Strategic Plan. And we look forward to incorporating all of your suggestions to make our plan even better. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez and your team. Great presentation. I even liked it better the second time. But I will ask you, if you all, I know I reached out to you and Caspa is definitely highlighting some of the things that we're doing. And I had those other ones and was a hard pick, but we don't have anything on the family like this. So if you guys can get that to me, just email me that one, and I can get that one to them as well, so that they can put it up on their website and share out the amazing things that we're doing here in San Bernardino City Unified School District, which we know that our parents, again, have been on the forefront of all of this. And so we just, we have a love, like you said, and a passion to, to make sure that we're helping everyone that needs help. And definitely, when the parents get the help, they can better help their students. So we appreciate that. And thank you again. And we're going to move forward with our agenda. Nine point O, reports and comments. Nine point one, board member. If you'd like to make a comment, please put it in the chat, because I can see it. You're spread out all everywhere, so I cannot see hands. All right, I believe it's Dr. Flores. And Dr. Flores, you can go ahead and come off mute and begin.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank the staff for all their great work today. It's just really amazing. Also, our finance group, our team. Janie, I was really, it's unheard of that we don't have any findings in our audit, because we do have a lot of money. And then also, Dr. Rodriguez, just want to thank you and your team for all that. Director Beatrice, also Gonzalez, I mean, it's just incredible. Thank you so much. And I, I want to also ask Dr. Volkmer. I'm getting a lot of kudos for, from families regarding our distribution of fresh fruit and vegetables and other staples like beans and rice and potatoes. And I, are we going to continue to do that? And do we just do it once a week, or when do we do it?
We do it, we do it every Wednesday afternoon. Dr. Flores, can you hear me?
Yeah.
We do it every Wednesday afternoon. And as we shift to a new meal distribution plan, we'll be able to do it even more. We'll be able to give them better bulk in terms of the, what they're receiving in a, kind of a seven-day package, if you will.
Right. Do we give them milk as well? Is there milk in there? And juice? Oh, wow, that's wonderful. Well, they're appreciative and they are now, word of mouth is going out, so we better beef it up. So I really want to commend whoever made, I mean, whoever envisioned that, that's really great. I think it's honorable and also very, very, how would you say, compassionate? And, and I mean, it's, it's, it's very heartwarming that we're doing that. So thank you. And then I got a couple of calls about, I'm glad that we're doing vaccinations at Arroyo. However, the complaint is that they're doing it in the gym and they're closing the doors. And it could be a spreader of, and they're, they're not adhering, I don't know, this is what they told me. I don't know if it's true. They're not adhering to the six feet distancing. So I'm not sure, you know, could you look into that? Because, and maybe just listening to Dr. Leonardo, I mean, could we do it outside under the shade? Or, you know, so that's in the open? I, I'm not sure. And who, who's doing it? St. Bernardino's or, or Loma Linda? Who are we partnering with?
Partnership at Arroyo Valley is with County Department of Public Health.
Oh, okay, so.
Am I correct, Eric?
Yes, it is the Department of Public Health. We do have numerous HEPA units inside the, the location for them. And we do spot check them on a weekly basis to make sure they're adhering to, to their own rules. But we can follow.
Yeah. So is the complaint legitimate that there, the doors are closed and they're not doing six feet? I mean, I don't know if you're there.
Yeah, I've been, I've been in there a dozen times and never observed that. We go through intentionally to make sure that they're following their own, their own protocols, but it's something we can definitely keep an eye on.
Right. Would you please, and then ask them why come they don't do it outside? Or, I don't know, because it does, I mean, that's, it's just a concern that I was given a couple of people. So. Okay, and that's it. Thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Tillman?
Yes, and I, I do want to thank the staff for the work we're doing. We're giving out the food. And I talked to Ms. Christakis. She said there are going to be some carts, because I have a concern when we go to the, the one day and for multiple kids in the family, that's a lot of stuff. A lot of our parents have to walk, so I just want to make sure that Mrs. Christakis assured me they want to have those carts. And, and also maybe, I've had, parents call me about, for us to, to, number one, I want to thank everybody for being patient through all this that we're going through with COVID nineteen. And there are some frustrations, but the parents are telling me that, that they're online doing distance learning with their kids from eight to twelve in the morning. And a lot of the things that we are asking the parents to do, like pick up books, are at that same time. And they're frustrated, because if they're sitting there with their student doing distance learning, they can't leave other kids, if they have another little kid, or if they're doing a distance learning and they're young, they can't leave them in the house to go out and get the book at the timeframe we're giving them. So we have to at least understand that if, we, if we know that we have students and parents doing distance learning between eight and twelve, then we have to have options other than the same time to pick up books. It's the same thing with the food. I mean, I, Ms. Christakis said that they did a, a survey and a, a majority of parents pick the time between eight and eleven. But also, we can do it at other times to ensure that the parents who are, a lot of them are single parents who are home by themselves, can have the opportunity to do the, help their kids with their lessons and, and do the online stuff. And then after that, go out and, and, and get the food, maybe, then we should do that. And whatever we can do to, to accommodate parents at this time, I think is critical. And we, we are getting CARES money. Ms. Christakis, how much money are we getting specifically for the coronavirus? I think you said it was a hundred and seven million dollars for next year? And then we'll get new, will we get new money out of this new bill that Congress and President Biden has passed recently?
So the money that we know about for next year, we actually have about two years to spend is a little over a hundred and two million. And we should get some when Congress passes the new bill. We don't have any information on that yet.
Right. So I just hope that we're, make sure we're empowering the staff, because it's little things. I mean, if it's carts, carts don't cost a whole lot. So we definitely got the money to do it. It would just be sad that you have folks who can't get food, because we haven't provided enough carts or, or met them where they're at in terms of being able to accommodate those parents. And like I said, the same thing with the books, the picking up books and that kind of stuff. And then the, the, the very last thing, and a parent mentioned it, but as we get vaccinated and then it, and, and maybe being able to do a outdoor graduation at a large venue. I don't want to mention the venue, but I'll talk to Dr. Volkmer. We're going to agendize it. But, because I don't want somebody else to secure the venue. But if we could do a large outdoor venue and then, and, and have staff that are vaccinated and volunteer to come back. And then find a way to distance the students and then be big enough so that the parents can be distanced also. Then I think it's, it's definitely doable. And, and all this, I believe, is because of the vaccination. I think that I, I only feel comfortable now, knowing that so many of our staff will be fully vaccinated and then we can come back. Because whenever they talk about statistics, though, I don't care how small the statistic is, that's, that, those are people. And people getting sick and people dying. And I know too many people close to me that have passed away with COVID nineteen. So I know how serious it, it is. And, but so I really do see the light at the end of the tunnel. So, Dr. Volkmer, I think we should have a discussion on what the impact of vaccines is going to be, how we're going to deal with that. Let the experts weigh in on what that should mean. We haven't had a discussion yet. But I've said from the beginning that that's what's going to drive it. But I've said from the beginning that that's what's going to drive it. And I really think we're positioning ourselves at the right place where, um, for the next school year, we go to open, that, uh, we'll have a list of, hopefully everyone that wants to be vaccinated will be vaccinated. So we know for a fact that going into the next school year, we're going to have some, uh, in-person learning, which I think is tremendous. I don't know when the vaccine is going to be there for the, uh, the young people. And I know that because of the guidance, it still has to be, if the students aren't vaccinated, it's still going to be some, uh, social distancing there in the classroom, which is going to limit the number of students we can have in class, right? So that's what we should start discussing. And I don't know, at, at the, what is the, the start date for the calendar now? Is it August?
Yes, I don't know the exact date, Mr. Tillman, but it is August. And on the 16th, you'll hear, uh, some information about our, um, accelerated student achievement plan. And then we'll start talking about next year, over the summer, next year, et cetera. So you'll get some information about what we, what we think we can do, what we're preparing, we're preparing for everything.
Beautiful.
Literally, we're preparing for anything.
Okay. And then I just, again, I just wanted, uh, thank everybody. This has not been a normal year. This has been a horrible year for everyone, a horrible year for education. Our main goal has been, uh, student safety. Can Dr. Volkmer, do, do we have numbers that, um, parents can call that, that have, um, issues with, um, mental health and getting counseling for students? Is, is there information for that?
Yes, absolutely.
Is it on our website?
Yes.
Okay. So as long as we, uh, making sure we have the resource for that too. Uh, I in no way are minimizing all that we've been through. And I'll be the first to admit, and I tell parents all the time, uh, this has not been the type of education or the best education possible. And whatever we can do to ensure that our kids are safe, we want to work with them, uh, to do that. But I think.
Mr. Tillman, if it, because I got to go to another board member.
We're close, we're close to the end. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam President. I think I have about 10 seconds now, but, um, first of all, thank you, Danny, for, uh, Mr. Tillman, for bringing up the food carts, because I know we've talked about that in the past. And, uh, I'm just really, really glad that, uh, you know, and it's a blessing that our, our district is, is helping out our families out there and having those, you know, distributions of food. I mean, what an amazing job. I see those pictures all the time and just really grateful for that. And thank goodness, we are giving out quite a bit of food to where we do need carts, uh, to carry the food for those folks that are walking to and from our schools. So thanks for bringing that up. Just want to say thank you again to our folks going out there and doing Operation Student Recovery. Really important out, we're out there checking on our families. Not just one, if they're not going to school, but two, to make sure they're okay. So, you know, we call them the wellness checks and making sure that they're well as well as their families. So I know, you know, getting out there and doing that many visits in a day is a, a huge effort um, on the district and our staff. So greatly appreciated to everybody that's been out there. Uh, just want to say thank you for all the great presentations today. And our family engagement programs are absolutely amazing. I know I've been able to participate in a few myself and have really enjoyed them and just, it's an amazing process and, uh, Family University too. I think that's a great, great idea, just good stuff that you're doing with our families and getting them engaged. This weekend, we, we had, uh, the 38th Phi Delta Kappa Black History B from the Delta Road Chapter. We had, uh, some of our fellow folk ladies there, Linda Bardir was there as well. And just want to congratulate all the students that did an amazing job. You know, it's obviously a little bit different this year as we were doing it virtually. And, uh, we as judges get to view a lot of videos, just some amazing performances by our students and, uh, great job to our staff and families as well and to everyone that can, um, participate in it. And I, I just want to say, you know, we, we've heard some public comments, uh, uh, this evening and, and a lot of my colleagues have talked about as well, this has been beyond a challenging year. And I know we had a, a parent on earlier who was talking about, uh, her child being a senior. And I think most folks know my, my son is a senior as well. So, you know, this has been a challenge for all of us. Definitely, we're parents first. It's been a heartbreaking year for me. I'll say that as, as a father. Definitely not the, the year I would hope for, for my son as a senior, but, uh, you know, the one good thing is, is that he is safe, you know, and, um, that's first and foremost, is that he's safe and he's okay. And, uh, you know, I was hoping that we'd come back to school. I think everybody knows that, but when I talked to my son recently, you know, hey, um, son, are you ready to go back to school? Would you want to go back to school? He said, you know what, Dad, I'm, I'm okay. I'm okay with this. And, you know, they've acclimated many of them to distance learning and understanding that, um, he even understands that it's safety first. So, um, I know that's always been our premise as a district and as a board. You know, I listened to the parent tonight about possibly having some sort of in-person celebration. I'm one who would obviously love to do that. But, you know, obviously, uh, as Mr. Tillman said, we're going, we're going to have to look at the data, we have to, science and, and only if it's safe to do so. And trust me, I, I would love to have that as well. As a parent, let me just say, as a father of a senior. But I, I will not compromise my son's safety either, uh, just because I want to have an in-person celebration. I participated in quite a few drive-through celebrations last year and they were a lot of fun. You know, it was definitely different, something new. And I was, uh, I had a good time in the ones that I participated in. And so if that's what we do this year, I'm going to celebrate just as much, if not more in that particular way, because, uh, you know, our children have gone through a lot this year, our staff have gone through a lot. And, and I know our families have gone through a lot. And I mean, I just get goosebumps, uh, talking about it because it, it's, it's not been a year that we would hope for, but as I was watching that video at the end right now, the family engagement programs, I just saw the creativity in our staff as well, um, how they're, they're making learning interesting and engaging um, in a very different environment, uh, in regards to virtual teaching and learning. And, and the one good thing I see coming out of this, and we always say we're going to come out of this better than we went into it, is just the innovation that we've been able to create in regards to different methodologies and strategies of teaching and learning. And, uh, you know, we've discovered quite a bit, uh, that maybe we didn't think we could do a year ago. And we're doing it now. So compliments to everyone that's come along with us, that's gone through this, endured this challenge. We've all grown from it and we've all got some more new scars from it as well. But, uh, the good thing is, is there is light at the end of the tunnel. Uh, I heard Danny say as well, and I'm just glad that we're seeing that light too. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. My, mine is short, but, uh, I, I'm just hoping one of the things we do, we have some type of communication with the major cable companies. You know, it's time for us to invite them to the table if we haven't already, just to say, with the, uh, the, the fees you receive from San Bernardino City, you need to be giving us a better product than you're doing. So, uh, I hope, I hope that conversation is in the, uh, making. And, you know, and occasionally I hear from teachers who say, I would love to be back. And I hear from students who will say the same, but I also hear from teachers who said, no way. And I hear from students who say, no way. So I don't know what we are doing survey wise, just to find out, you know, what, what's the feeling now with people? Because people are going in, getting the vaccine. I, I don't know if this is something you want to explore or not. But, uh, I, I want to say thanks to, uh, thanks to everybody. It, it, it has, it's, it's been, uh, quite a ride on a merry-go-round and, you know, we're still going around and around. But we're doing some good things and, uh, we're, we're putting out good efforts. So I just want to say, uh, to all employees from our interim superintendent down to the person who's only working two hours a week as an aide. Appreciate every, and everybody in between, we really appreciate you. I was supposed to be, uh, reading across America today, but due to a medical appointment, I could not. But my substitute person, and I'm glad she was able to do it, shared with me that during the reading, at one point, and I believe it might have been, uh, 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 maybe a pro basketball player, but I understand 10,000 students was in that room. Uh, 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 of our students was in that room, uh, observing, uh, that particular person. So I, I just have to give, uh, as, as proud as I am of all of you, I just have to give a shout out to, uh, uh, Marcy Hunter and, um, Ms. Coverson for the, the work they did putting this together, because it sounded like it was phenomenal. And I, again, to all of you, thank you so much and thanks for all you do for this district.
Thank you. And Ms. Rosales Medina?
Um, yes, I was just, uh, I saw, uh, Dr. Scott Wyatt's response when she mentioned 10,000. It was priceless, but that is amazing. That's the whole point. We want to get early literacy. And I think Dr. Flores also mentioned this earlier, early literacy, uh, early on, so that way they can learn comprehension and so forth. With my public comment, I do have a senior, uh, my board comment, I do have a senior as well. But for my son, he actually wants to go back and he wants to find ways how he can interact with other students. It's like his senior year and they have not been able to connect in person. And it's not even the same when they're doing their classes. So it's back to possibility where we can come in a, uh, and have a, a ceremony. That's basically the only thing they're going to have all year for their senior year. If we can do that, then that would be great. Of course, if we're going to do it safely, I, I am in full support of it. And, um, and, and trying to look at how we can definitely provide that for uh, at least the seniors and the few of the family members that are able to attend. Want to recognize that this is International Women's Month, so, uh, congratulations to everyone out there, um, all the women who has been doing the work and, um, been doing the work from the get-go. Moms, workers, uh, we have our elected officials here and so forth. So I wanted to say, um, Happy Women's Month. Thank you, everyone.
All right, and Ms. Subios. See you in the chat.
Hey, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Awesome. Good night, everyone. Um, yeah, so just, you know, kind of, uh, supporting everything that's been said. I wanted to just very briefly mention, um, Operation Recovery. Um, I was out there, it was a great event. So, uh, you know, thank you for, uh, for all the staff that put that together. Also, want to give a shout out to, um, Councilmember Kim and Ben Reno. So we were actually partnered together to get out there. And so it was nice, that, that was nice to see them out there i- in the community, you know, supporting our school and school district. Also, as for the food distribution, um, I actually went out to Arroyo Valley, uh, last Wednesday to pick up some food myself, because I wanted to, you know, see, drive, drive through myself and, and, and all that good stuff and see the kind of food that the district's handing out. I, I was very pleasantly surprised. There were some vegetables, potatoes, melon, um, things like that. So, uh, that was good. Also, it was nice to see that there's, uh, different timeframes. So as it has already been mentioned, I think they have, um, 11, eight to 11 in some sites. Um, and then there's two high schools, Arroyo Valley, and I think there's, uh, I think it's Indian Springs, I can't remember. But, uh, they do two to five, um, right? So I went right about 4:30, no line, um, which was nice. So that's a good time to go. But yeah, I was, I was pleased, um, you know, to, to drive up there. The staff were working hard. I was really, you know, grateful for their, for their work. Also, I just want to, um, I guess, mention here, um, as well that I, I'm interested in bringing, bringing the discussion up for, um, again, special education assessments, in-person special education assessments. So now that our, um, numbers are declining and that, you know, our athletics have also been able to return to, uh, to, to training on campus. I would like to, you know, hopefully maybe bring that back as an agenda item and, and discuss, you know, you know, timelines and, you know, timeframes and, you know, for that particularly, um, I don't have a senior, but I do have a sister who's a senior. And so she'll be graduating this year. Um, she has, you know, shared with me as well that, um, you know, she would like to have some in-person, uh, if, if at all, at all possible, you know, with, uh, distancing and all that good stuff. So again, I'd be open to, to that conversation as well. So yeah, other than that, thank you so much, everyone.
Excellent. Thank you all. And I'll just wrap up real quick because I know we still have probably a, a couple of hours or so left in, uh, for us to continue. But I did get a chance to do Read Across America. It was fun. It was exciting. And Dr. Hill, I'm glad I didn't look at the number because I don't think I had 10,000, but I can still pretend and maybe think I did. I don't know, but it was great. I do also want to, uh, share that there was a lot of activities, um, out there for Black Free Month. But Dr. Hill and I had a chance to do something absolutely unique. To, you know, we never think about the history that's right underneath our feet. We always sometimes look far, far away. But we had a chance to hear about the rich history of San Bernardino. And not only it was just San Bernardino, but many of us that are even on this call right now have made history. And we really haven't really acknowledged that or paid that attention. But we did talk about our school board members as well as other school board members that, um, you know, was on this journey before we even got here. So just acknowledging that, um, sheds a, a positive light on our, our city. And we want to do that as much as possible. And we also had a chance to, I think several other board members with the LCAP meeting, still, um, connecting with our community. So important because we're hearing and, and it makes a difference because their footprints are all over the work that we do. And that, that's something we cannot take for granted because, um, everyone is not, either they don't have time or whatever is going on. But we, we value our parents and we want to hear from them. And so that is, that is so important. And I think we display that. And then lastly, I just want to read this. I think it's actually will contribute even further to Women History Month. But it actually is a shout out and a kudos to the district. And I want to kind of read it how they, they sent it. So it says, "Let me tell you, I don't care what people say, but this is helpful." "I went this morning for the first time before work and left at home, left home to my kids and I hadn't had a chance to go by one of the school locations that's open from eight to 11. They have plenty to provide, a breakfast and a lunch bag for each child. You pull up and signal for how many children and they put the bags on the table for you to grab. I thanked and I appreciated the women out there working. I also want to thank the district because this here is a blessing to many." So again, we are just grateful for what we're able to do for our community and we should never take what we have for granted. All right, moving on to nine point two superintendent and staff.
Thank you, President Rogers. Just a couple, uh, couple announcements and updates. First of all, you mentioned the LCAP and our, the next meeting, our next LCAP community meeting for our community will be March 18th. That's a Thursday from 5:30 to 7:00. So community members, if you're still with us at this late hour, please know that you're invited. We would love to have you be a part of that. Your voice is very important to that process. You've heard several people, uh, reference Operation Student Recovery. We had over two, we talked about having the, the thousand students, uh, contacted, but we also had over 200 volunteers. And we want to thank each and every one of those people for taking time out of their, what I know are very busy schedules to make sure they were making those contacts with the 1,000 students. Want to congratulate Dr. Rodriguez, her team on a, on a record-breaking day. We haven't done 1,000, but of course you know what happens after you do 1,000. There you go. I love that thumbs up. A couple of the recognitions, Sierra High School's counseling program has met the criteria to become a recognized ASCA model program by the American School Counselor Association. They'll hold this designation for a five-year term. So I want to congratulate Principal Hector Murietta and the counseling staff at Sierra High School on this outstanding accomplishment. I have a visual for the next one. We received a certificate. I'll try to show it to you. It's from the United States Census. I know this was an important project, uh, in the board's eyes. And so we did receive a very, very, very nice certificate. And I'll read the, um, description. It says, "The U.S. Census Bureau hereby recognizes San Bernardino City Unified School District as an invaluable member of the 2020 Census Community Partnership and Engagement Program. We appreciate the efforts you made in making the partnership program a success and helping achieve a successful 2021 census." So, Board, I know this was very important to you. I just want you to know that, uh, the district was recognized in that way. In terms of end of year activities, um, we actually tasked our high school principals with coming up with a plan about probably over a month ago, maybe six weeks ago. We were in a very different environment six weeks ago. If you'll remember, Board, we were at 100 plus, 150 plus cases per 100,000. So, uh, as they always do, they put together a very, very nice plan, not only for graduation, but for a number of other different types of activities, some that are district-wide and some that are unique, uh, to specific programs at specific high schools. We are, are vetting that plan, uh, in terms of safety. And just last week, we had the conversation about, as we see our numbers coming down significantly, you know, if we continue this trend, who knows where we'll be in June. And, uh, we want to do And, uh, we want to do everything we can for our seniors. We know it's been a rugged road for them, uh, and we're going to do everything we can. And so we are, we are already looking at how we might do some type of in-person, uh, activity. We're, we're going back. None of us are thinking about these, you know, where we started last March, where we talked about congregate activities. You can't have a congregate activity of more than fifty or more than ten or, you know, some point it was probably more than two. Uh, and so we're, we're researching that to see what guidelines we're still under and getting that data pulled together. But we rest assured, we are working on end-of-year activities, uh, consistently and we'll do everything we can for our senior class, class of twenty-one. And then finally, I wanted to share with you that, uh, you know, the, the governor has announced that he and the legislature have come to an agreement. Uh, there was a budget hearing on SB eighty-six today. They're scheduled to hear it and, and most likely vote and approve it. Um, and then they'll go to the governor, who it's anticipated will approve it as well. A number of us, uh, got to meet with Assemblymember Eloise Reyes this, this morning. We're very appreciative of, uh, having the time to meet with her, was myself and the superintendents from Rialto, Colton and Fontana. Um, and she had a, a consultant from their budget, uh, committee, uh, that, that helps them with their budget workings. Very, very informative. And I, I just, just a couple of highlights I wanted you to know, Board. Uh, I thanked, uh, Assemblymember Reyes for emphasizing local control. I know that's very important to this board. Uh, and the, at this point, the bill does allow for local control. It is a district-by-district decision. Uh, we'll give you more information about that, but I was very thankful to her in terms of carrying that message. Uh, the money for the grant, and it is still a grant program, uh, the two billion dollars is not connected to the four point five billion dollars for learning recovery. So our, our board's decision, and I shared with them that we were the first in the, in the state to make the decision to stay in distance learning for the remainder of the year. Uh, whether we choose to go for that money in the, in the future does not jeopardize, in it or not, does not jeopardize our ability to get money for learning recovery. So that's a very, very, uh, important piece that we wanted to make sure she, um, uh, was aware of. And, and again, we're thankful for that. And then, uh, in terms of what, uh, Dr. Hill mentioned a little bit earlier about the, uh, cable companies, um, we did prepare, uh, correspondence for, uh, President Rogers to send to, uh, Assemblymember, uh, Reyes about broadband and our needs, a continued emphasis. Uh, we're requesting that the legislature continue to make that a high priority to, to, uh, continue to work on the digital divide. We know it's very real. COVID did nothing but accentuate that and bring it to everybody's. Uh, we already knew it was there, but it just kind of went on steroids. And so we've asked, uh, Assemblymember, uh, Reyes, who was asking us for information, actually to continue to, um, help, uh, keep that in front of the legislature so that we can, we can bring better broadband, um, uh, capability to our community. So thank you for bringing that up, Dr. Hill, and we are working on it. And, um, those are my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. Now, we'd like the, the board to know, surprisingly, I had the opportunity to speak with, uh, Senator Padilla's office and Senator Feinstein today about broadband in our district. So they're getting the word and they're hearing it and I'm taking every opportunity I can to share that. Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, I just want to, um, give you an update because Mr. Vacheer, um, came back with the information. Um, you are fully, um, covered by the vaccine two weeks after you take your second dose. So two weeks after your second dose, you have full vaccine coverage. And I think that information is important. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're now moving to our, uh, ten point zero consent items.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. And, uh, are there any items that we need to pull?
Yes.
Let me check really quickly. Okay.
Yes, Madam President.
Oh, okay. I heard two voices. Okay.
Dr. Flores, yeah. Uh, ten point ten, ten point eleven, ten point fourteen and ten point sixteen. And I'm recusing myself because I'm on the, uh, board, um, of the copy board.
Copy. Okay.
Should I check out? Should I check out?
Yeah, you will have to check out and then I will text you back.
Right now, right now.
Well, we're going to go ahead and take the vote. Let me see if there's any. Is there anything else to pull? That's going to be it. All right.
I was just, give me, just give me one second, just making sure. Um, I, I just needed clarification on ten point twenty-three.
Okay, so we'll pull, we're pulling ten point two-three as well. All right. So I'll go ahead and take the vote. If there's no others, I'm not hearing anything else. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Mr. Salas Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Subios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carry. All right, Dr. Flores, you will go ahead and go off now. And we will.
Can we take them all together?
Well, we're only down to the ones that they pulled right now. Yeah, all of them. That's why.
All the ones that, all the ones that Dr. Flores pulled, which were ten, 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 eleven, fourteen and ten sixteen. So moved.
Second.
All right. No, any discussion? All right then, I'll go ahead and take the vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Subios?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carry. All right, give me one second.
I pulled ten point twenty-three.
Yes. All righty, make sure she got it. It looks easy, but there's a lot of navigating going on on this side. I gotta check everything and make sure. Okay. Okay, I sent that to her. Okay, we can go ahead and, um, she said, okay.
Let me know when.
Okay. She should be logging in and I know they got to, she has to be let back in, right? So I'm sure somebody's watching.
She's in.
Okay, great. All righty, ten point three, two-three.
Yes, ten point two-three. It's just a clarifying question. It's referring to the, the sessions, um, which is, let's see here, fifteen hundred per session. What does a session mean? Is that a one day? Is that a day where all the students attend? So if you can clarify that, please?
Sure, it's for CAPS program. Um, a session is a class. These are master classes. And so, uh, we do not charge per pupil. It's actually for the, however many students show up. Our CAPS programs now are not unique to any particular site. So it allows students from all schools to participate in these programs because now we're virtual.
Okay, so per session is per class, basically.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Just needed to clarify that.
You're welcome.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. If there's no further discussion, Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Mr. Salas Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Subios?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carry. Thank you. We are now at eleven point oh action items. Eleven point one Personnel Report Number Fourteen, dated March second, twenty twenty-one.
Board has presented. So moved.
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, we'll take the vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Subios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. All right, we're now a motion carry. Thank you. Eleven point two Annual Audited Finance Report for Fiscal Year Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Subios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carry. All right, eleven point three Approval of the Memorandum of Understanding With the Making Hope Happen Foundation For Application To The U.S. Department Of Education Promise Neighborhoods Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. If there's no discussion, we'll take the vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Subios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carry. At this point, we're going to move to eleven point four. And Mr. Tillman, we will ask you to log out. And someone tell me when he's logged out. Is he out of the screen? I, I can't see everybody. Is that yes?
I don't see him.
Okay. And is that, was that, okay. So, um, we're now going to look at eleven point four Approval of Savant Preparatory Academy of Business Charter Renewal and Special Education Memorandum of Understanding. And I believe there are, are some comments?
Yes, there are. Um, I'll start with Cheryl Richardson. If you're available, please unmute.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. I am Cheryl Richardson, SBT A rep for Double A Hill Leadership and Steam Academy. I want to thank the Board and Cabinet members that came to the meeting that San Bernardino City Unified had with Del Vallejo staff last Monday at the request of our board members. The staff was taken back by the fact that the meeting was scheduled after contract hours and while half of our staff was out of training. We are also concerned about the twenty people that were at the meeting that San Bernardino City Unified invited and we are not sure of what their role is with the Savant situation. One San Bernardino City Unified School District Board Member, or I'm sorry, Director, was at the meeting which the district invited. She sends her daughter to Savant. This was a breach of our confidentiality and a conflict of interest. That shows the district has no intention of being transparent with Del Vallejo families, students or staff. Del Vallejo has not taken to social media to comment on the situation, but Savant has. Not only have the staff and parents of Savant put into question Del Vallejo's staff abilities to teach, but the representatives of Savant made comments about San Bernardino City Unified and community it serves. Savant representatives made remarks at the February second meeting such as, "I do live in San Bernardino. I do not like the school district." Another Savant representative stated, "We should not be living in greed. It is not greed to keep our campus and have the best for DV students. This creates not only an adverse work environment at DV, it jeopardizes the physical and mental well-being of our parents, students and staff. DV students will not understand why elementary students get the best classrooms, new tables, new equipment and an area which is in their school." Another comment from a Savant representative states that DV is scared that we will see what a good school looks like. The comments from Savant have put a strain on the relationship between Double A Hill Leadership Steam Academy and Savant. The four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars that was to improve DV to make a middle school campus comparable to an elementary campus has all but failed. The new fence around DV has been cut four times and homeless have taken over. The principal of Savant stated that DV has multiple classrooms not in use. Yet she has never seen our site in operation. The classrooms that were given to Savant were in use. Our numbers have been incorrectly reported. It was stated that DV only has five hundred students. As a matter of fact, DV sits at six hundred and eighty-two students or six hundred and eighty-one students strong. Tom Pace at Building Services stated that if DV grows, boundaries would be redrawn and portables would be put up for DV students. Savant was not invited by DV to share our campus. Portable should not be, should be placed near the SE building away from the main campus and the two campuses should be separate. That should have been the plan from the beginning. According to Ms. Hopwood, Coordinator of Charter Schools, Savant has a hundred and eleven San Bernardino City Unified School District students. That equates to six K through three teachers and four twelve through, fourth through twelfth grade teachers. In a time when enrollment is down, San Bernardino City Unified is willing to sacrifice more than eleven teachers to keep a charter that has no academic data on the California dashboard. At no time did DV say that Savant should not operate as a charter. We ask for them to operate on a different location. So where does that leave DV parents, students and staff? We are not a political entity. We are a school. We are a family. We are your frontline workers. When we look good, you look good. When the, the staff at DV, the students of DV, the community of DV belong to you, you are to protect and represent us. It seems that because of the principle of Savant is a board member's daughter, Savant were override what this board is to protect. There is no reason for a charter to ask for a renewal four months before the charter is up, before test scores come out. We asked that the charter would be postponed. We asked that you relocate Savant. All have fallen on deaf ears. No parent of Savant talked about Savant's test scores. If you were to visit DV, you would see the same family mentality that Savant portrayed. Three years ago, I went with my colleagues to ask this board to support the change of Del Vallejo to Del Vallejo Leadership and Steam Academy. You made a promise to us. You need to fulfill your promise. It does not start with putting an elementary school on a middle school campus. DV asks for you to deny Savant's charter or relocate them to a suitable campus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Nicholas DiSosio.
Good evening. Hello, I'm Nick DiSosio. I'm a junior representative for Double A Hill Leadership and Steam Academy. I am a product of this district. I have lived within San Bernardino City nearly my entire life and I have attended SBC USD schools K through twelve. I chose to become a teacher in this city. I chose it specifically because of how much this district gave to me. I was very fortunate to have a wonderful array of teachers and other district staff that shaped, molded and prepared me to excel in college beyond, and beyond. Dr. Volkmer, excuse me, Dr. Volkmer himself helped me learn to dribble a soccer ball over twenty-three years ago. These experiences offered by San Bernardino City Unified School District impacted my future and inspired me to become an educator. It was so important to me to give back to the community that had given so much to me that I only applied to this district when searching for a position. And what, as, and I worked as a guest teacher till I was hired as a, as a full teacher. My concern and trepidation about Savant being co-located in our campus is born from that same drive and passion to give back to SBC USD District and its students. It is frustrating when district leadership, the people that are supposed to be advocates for our students, chose to give in to nepotism by giving a board members, Danny Tillman's daughter, half of our school site, all behind closed doors. The discussion to place Savant on our site was done in closed session, devoid of any transparency whatsoever. How do we know Mr. Tillman did not weigh in? What proof or evidence does the board have to bring questions of conflict of interest? Tonight, again, the board will likely choose to meet behind closed doors to discuss this matter. Again, what measures and evidence will prove that there is no conflict of interest? Since I stated, uh, excuse me, since I started in this district as a guest teacher sent to Sangre Gonia High School, at every meeting, we have talked about speeds of trust. One of them is to create transparency. How is having a meeting behind closed doors involving possible conflicts of interest in any way creating transparency? Leaders should lead by example. In a year, excuse me, in the year that has, uh, been going on, our students, parents and community and staff have been continually left in the dark. We as a staff have brought up the complete utter lack of information that has been offered to our stakeholders. Finally, at the behest of the board, the district met to discuss these issues. The meeting was set up after contract hours without any input from anyone at our site. A simple email to our principal would have revealed that half of our staff was unable to attend due to a district training. In addition, no certificated staff members, parents or community members were at all invited to this meeting. It was the barest attempt to comply with the request that Dr. Margaret Hill and Ms. Myra Subios had asked the district to do. For a meeting of such dire importance, you would think the board would consider scheduling input from the staff, uh, at the site. Our district is supposed to be about equity. Equity is about giving the most to those that need the most. I, as an elementary student in this district, knew that Del Vallejo was a school in need. I had heard, uh, excuse me, I had heard nothing but that DV needed help. And now the district is going to take from the one of the sites in greatest need and give to a for-profit school run by a board member's daughter. Del Vallejo was opened in nineteen fifty-nine. The only buildings built this century are being given to Savant. The most recently renovated classrooms, including the only rooms currently suitable to be computer labs, are being given to Savant. The most recently renovated classrooms, including the only rooms currently suitable to be computer labs, are being given to Savant. If DV needs more classrooms, Tom Pace assured us that we will get portables for DV and Savant will get more DV classrooms as they grow. How in any world is that equity? Why are those in need having to suffer further? Why are we as a site being cast off like unwanted trash? It is wrong. Writing wrongs is another one of those speeds of trust that I've sat through and heard in so many meetings. But it appears those lessons and trainings only apply to teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Lydia. Lydia, if you're available, please unmute.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lydia Sapata. I'm a teacher at Del Vallejo Leadership and Steam Academy. I'm also resident of San Bernardino. I am speaking today in regards to the co-location of Del Vallejo and Savant. It's been about a year since the decision was made to co-locate two schools without clearly communicating to all stakeholders what this entailed. DV parents, DV students, DV staff were largely unaware of what was going on. A choice that would impact the school heavily was made without the knowledge of those most impacted. I want to take a moment to explain that despite statements to the contrary, the eleven classrooms now given as Savant Prep were indeed needed and in use by Del Vallejo and Spectrum Special Education students. In fact, the main building being used by Savant Prep was built with funds from the Special Education Department for the purpose of serving the needs of our special education community. It was being used for this purpose before the arrival of Savant. The other classrooms, those directly attached to the larger buildings on the main campus, were also in use. In fact, last year, before the pandemic, when I tried to find an empty classroom for a staff holiday potluck, there were no classrooms available. Furthermore, I'm a member of ELAC, a committee that includes the parents of English learners, a population that is about 20% of our community. Parents asked for the school's help in creating a parent center. They were promised a space in which they could utilize school technology to meet their needs. With eleven classrooms gone, I don't see how we can keep this promise. I speak today not because I hold anything against Savant Prep themselves, but because I want to speak up for our Del Vallejo students and for the surrounding community. The decision to approve a charter school should not ever come at the expense of a local public school, especially when that charter school via the admission of their own parents serves so many students outside of the district. This is exactly the situation with Savant being placed on the DV campus, and this is the reason our staff so passionately speaks up. It is our duty as educators at DV to stand in defense of what's right for our students. Members of the board and district have assured me that they fully support our school. I asked them in making whatever decision the board makes tonight, that the interest of Del Vallejo students and the surrounding community be the primary consideration. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Darlene. Darlene, Darlene, if you're available, please unmute.
Do you want to call one more time?
Hello?
Okay, there, we can hear you.
You were saying the host had unmuted me, so it wasn't my, my fault. But anyway. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Greetings. I, I will begin by focusing on the basis of excellence and the speed of trust that has become the intricate part of our district's mission. When working with others, basis of excellence, service, we achieve success by consistently and effectively serving others. Perimeter of trust, we establish consistent perimeters of trust that are characterized by honesty, transparency, and collaboration. Speed of trust, create transparency. Declare your intent, get real and genuine, be open and authentic. This evening, I will be addressing San Bernardino City Unified School District procedure for renewing existing charter schools within the boundaries and the need to be transparent by providing information to the community in which we serve. Currently, our district hosts twelve charter schools, and many parents have decided to place their children consisting of approximately 4,000 in these local charter schools, assuming that their child will be the best educated opportunity than other public schools. As I evaluated the academic performance of twelve charter schools based post by San Bernardino City Unified School District with the California Board of Education requirements for ongoing renewal and replacement per A Assembly Bill 1505, signed by Governor Newsom in act of January 1st, 2020, I learned that there are three categories. High-performance charter assessed data, including two consistent years of growth, where students perform at grade level or above, and the same or above the state average in English language arts, math, English language progress indicators, and college and career. Low-performing charters assess data that indicates whether students are performing at the same or below the state average in English language arts, math, English language progression indicator, and college and career for the two prior years at the time of redoing application. Middle-range perform, performing charter schools are where all other charters are placed and at least one year of growth for two years prior to the renewal application. Based on the information currently reported in the board, the California Board of Education Dashboard, out of twelve charter schools hosted by San Bernardino City Unified School District, one is in the top half of high-performance charter. Two have not been placed due to the fair, due to fairly new and out of testing range to provide assessment data to the California dashboard. Nine charter schools, after being in operation anywhere from ten to 21 years in the district, falls in the low-performing category. Based on this information, San Bernardino City Unified School District has not provided the best service or been transparent about charter in general. Public schools have to inform parents when the school has not made the grade or low-performing status. The same information must be made available to parents that consider enrolling their children in district charter schools. This information may have an impact on their decision as to where to place their children. The lure of fancy names must not be the only information the district provides to parents. I recommend that San Bernardino City Unified School District Charter School Operation develop a charter transparency annual report system to keep the community informed as to how these charter schools are serving the academic needs of our socially-economic disadvantaged students and how our tax dollars are being spent. Seeing that I got a few more minutes, I would like to mention how that the district, one of our classrooms is supposed to be our staff workspace for this year and next year. After we'd all the money been put in to fix it up, guess where it's going next year? To Savant. So where will we be having our workspace? Figure that. Have a blessed day.
Ms. Carter, I believe, Ms. Rosales Medina, you have a clarifying question?
Yes, I do have a clarifying question, and this would be for Ms. Suki, if she's able to. I'm not sure if she was able to listen to the comment that was being presented and some of the issues that she mentioned that we, we with regarding the only first or two years, so I don't know if you were able to listen to her comment completely.
Yes, Ms. Medina, I was. I think that perhaps it would be best for the board to wait until deliberations, and then I can respond to your questions as well as any that were made by the, the public.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, then. Our next speaker is Grace Beatty. If you're available, please unmute.
Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to thank our union president for expressing her support on behalf of the community surrounding Del Vallejo Leadership and Steam Academy and its members. On Monday, staff met with Dr. Volkimer and his cortige. My colleagues believed since 20 district personnel attended that they wanted to work with staff. On the contrary, that just proved they are masters at organizing. The more people you bring to the table, the less time staff has to voice parents, teachers, and community concerns. Staff had to interject because many recognized the strategy. Therefore, please do not perceive our staff as being aggressive. We were simply prepared. I am Grace Beatty, Union Rep at Del Vallejo Leadership and Steam Academy. By design, the relationship between the union and the district should be confrontational. In any agreement, there are concessions because there is strength and honor in that process. It shows weakness for this board not to inform our DV community that they were taking away resources from a neighborhood struggling economically and gifting a half a million dollars of taxpayers' money to support a not a district charter school that is owned and operated by a board member's daughter. Here's a thought. Let her family take out a small business loan and buy a biz, a building for her business. This charter school is a business for profit. Why has this board invested so much in Savant? What, why were our students not worthy enough for this board to upgrade the facilities for their use over the years? Our school was built in 1959, and giving away the newest classrooms, six in total from our, on our campus, seven bathrooms, and a whole building is not in the best interest of the children we serve, but for only one individual. Is this board willing to let over 600 socio-economically deprived children go without because somebody's daughter feels entitled? There are people in this country that believe some kids are waste. That's how they justify taking away money and resources. That's how you rationalize it and make it okay. It is not okay for this body to target this middle school in this community at any time, especially since you have not provided any real resources for our children in decades, and you get ADA for them. How do you justify taking this action so casually? When some people get complacent and forget where they come from and to whom they serve, they forget to follow laws because no one holds them to it. There is no oversight. I believe that's why San Bernardino is in the shape that it's in because elected officials give taxpayers dollars and resources to their relatives and friends. San Bernardino County is the largest county in the country and the poorest. Tax revenue is high and services are low. We need oversight, not only in this district, but in the county as well. Two conflicting sets of information. Maps outdated, closets being portrayed as classrooms, missing questions and responses. This board has misrepresented to the state the number of classrooms available at our site. Find a new site for Savant, one that does not deprive disadvantaged district children of their resources. We cannot spare the space. Furthermore, there are six charters within five miles of our Leadership and Steam Academy. This board has been operating without oversight for so long that your decision tonight will not surprise, upset, or deter me from fulfilling my duty to advocate for DV's families, for those sacrificed by this board. I will use my voice in support of what is just, in support of what is right for the students, parents, and communities we serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and our last speaker is Cheryl. Cheryl, please unmute if you're available.
Can you hear me? Yes. Good evening. Thank you for taking my comments. Service in any capacity is a high calling, a less, forgive me, a selfless commitment that I'm sure you understand all too well. The late-night meetings after a long workday when you'd rather be home with your families, but instead you're here, serving our community. With our political climate being what it is, we seldom see servants behaving as servants, acting in the best interests of their constituents. Instead, we see elected officials taking advantage of their positions to exploit the public coffers for their own gain or for the gain of their families and cronies. Sadly, in such instances, the most vulnerable will suffer. As a public school district board, you were elected by this community to serve its students, their parents, and our community taxpayers. Our schools are who you serve. What I see here is not a posture of servitude, but rather one of authority. But elected officials are intended to serve, not dictate. I understand that charter schools are part of the board's responsibilities, and in all the talk of inserting a charter school on DV's campus, Prop 39 has been brandished about as a requirement for so much being spent to accommodate them. But if Prop 39 is the reason for the expenditures, I ask rhetorically, what about the other charter schools in San Bernardino? Again, rhetorically, how much money will be spent to ensure that they are on par with Savant? I'm in no way suggesting money should be diverted from public schools to charters. I'm only asking rhetorically if there has been a fair and equitable division of funding, or is it only Savant headed by Ms. Tillman, board member Danny Tillman's daughter, that is receiving this level of support from the district? If I were a servant of the community who oversees taxpayer coffers, I would want to be extra careful to dot all the i's and cross all the t's to make sure I don't even look as if I'm engaging in anything that smells this much like impropriety. When my kids were little and they did something wrong and were caught, they would say, "I didn't mean to." And I would ask, "But did you mean not to? Did you do everything you could to prevent it from happening?" You, elected officials, are held to a higher standard than, "I didn't mean for this to look like nepotism." My question is, did you mean for it not to? Did you do everything in your power to make sure everything was above board and transparent and did not even appear to exhibit favoritism in any way? You did not adhere to the rules regarding community notification before a charter would be inserted on DV's campus. You did not seek public comments. You did not adhere to the California charter laws, which state that charters must be no less than five miles apart. Did you mean for this not to look like nepotism? On what authority do you act if not within the legal authority granted by the rules which govern such actions? With so many issues, the only fair way to proceed is to deny this charter on DV's campus and move forward with a commitment to be more transparent in the future in accordance with policy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Ms. Cunningham, is that our final?
That was our last speaker, ma'am.
Thank you so much. And I do, I also make note that there are members from Savant that is here so that there are any additional questions that we may have as we move forward with the vote. But before the, the board considers this item, I would like to also insert. I would like to make a statement regarding concerns raised by the members of the public during the consideration of this charter renewal. Specifically, we understand that the concerns were raised regarding a potential conflict of interest involving a district board member and a Savant administrator. Based on this board's strong desire to conduct district business, transparency, and in full accordance with the law, as well as to address the concerns raised at the public hearing or otherwise brought to our attention on this issue, we asked the district's counsel, Atkinson, Adelson, Lawyer, and Rudd and Romo to provide a legal opinion on this topic. Our legal counsel has determined under the facts of this matter that no prohibited conflict of interest exists or is implicated by the actions on this renewal request. I also note that the board member in question, in abundance of caution to avoid the appearance of impropriety, has recused himself and abstained from any participation in this matter. So the next item, as I said, is action on the renewal request and special education MOU. Although the district informed Savant that they also had an opportunity to make an additional presentation tonight, they were, we, we were informed that they will be not making a presentation. So therefore, the staff's analysis and recommendation is to approve the charter renewal and the MOU. Is there a member of the board that would like to make a motion?
I'm moved.
I heard a motion and a second. And at this time, is there any discussion?
I'll put comment back. Hold on a second.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Flores, all right, will be followed by Dr. Wyatt. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Flores, followed by Ms. Rosales Medina. Followed by Dr. Wyatt.
Okay, thank you, Madam President.
I want to address the concerns, a couple of concerns from Del Valle Ho staff. Thank you very much for expressing your points of view and so forth. Some of your concerns have also been some of our concerns. I don't know if you read the resolution. And in the resolution, there is an MOU that's going to be crafted, and a lot of your concerns will be in there. And you should know that we, as board members, share some of those concerns. And you should also know that Savant is willing to entertain and, not, not entertain, but comply by our conditions and concerns that we have. And so under the law, under the law, we are obligated to provide through Prop ninety, thirty-nine, space. It's a legal, it's a legal. I guess Sukie will speak to it, but it's legal. It's a legal condition. And my concern is the cohabitation as well. However, in the MOU and also in the, in the agreement, there's a facilities aspect. Once they reach two hundred and forty, they will be moving to another site. And that is one of the MOU conditions that you should be aware of. And also, I don't know if any other board members want to speak to some of the other conditions and concerns that we have. Do you want me to keep going, or?
Dr. Flores, you can, you can give whatever comments you want to get, because they, there are others in line, so I don't know exactly what they will say.
What they're gonna say.
But, but they are going to make.
I also would like the public to understand that there's a new law. There's a new condition that the, that the demographics of the district have to be mirrored as much as possible in new charter schools that are renewed, any, any charter schools going forward. And it's going to be a condition, and they'll have benchmarks and timelines in terms of complying with them. So that's two. And I'm sure my other colleagues, the other board members will say, will, will, will mention others, but those are the two that I wanted to mention, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, and Ms. Rosales Medina.
Yes, and I just, and thank you, Dr. Flores, for mentioning that. So yeah, there is a new law, and I wanted, if Sukie can kind of, kind of explain that with, with those, the MOU that we are asking to be included and to be approved with the MOU in support of special education, English learners, and other areas. So I'm not sure if she's, I can't see her right now, but.
I'm here.
Yes, and so can you just verify that they will have to with the new MOU as well as any other charter school that we asked for renewal, that they would have to fall in line with the new guidelines?
Sure, absolutely. As one of the speakers mentioned earlier, AB fifteen oh five came into effect in July twenty twenty. And as a result of that, one of the fifteen elements, one of the fifteen required elements of a charter petition has been revised. In the past, the charter was to include information as to how they would achieve a racial net balance that is reflective of the district. As a result of the changes to fifteen oh five, that, those categories have been expanded to also include special education students, EL students, as well as socio-economically disadvantaged students. Now, Savant has made some changes to its charter petition to include recruitment efforts. However, to ensure that they actually abide by and adhere to those recruitment efforts and make meaningful process, progress, excuse me, towards achieving all of those subgroups of, subgroups of students, we're going to include information in the MOU that will include benchmarks, that will include timelines, and that will include accountability and reporting back to this board. And Ms. Medina, as you indicated, these are new requirements. So each and every charter that comes up before this board, whether it be for renewal or a new petition, will have to comply with the same requirements.
Thank you for that, and, and just to note that this is not necessarily just to target Savant, but this is something that we're going to be in all renewals, petition renewals. This will be also requested of all the charter schools. So that way, moving forward, we are meeting the new law that was recently passed. So thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely. All right, Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Sukie, also for some of the information and legal clarifications that, you know, we've been looking for as, as a board as well, and definitely for sharing it with our community. I do share some concerns that we've already heard in regards to the demographics of Savant. And, you know, I want to be clear as well that when, when we look at our charter schools, not just Savant, but all charter schools, we're going to have to have a greater level of accountability and transparency. I know we spoke with, with our folks from the district and regards to our charter subcommittee, and I'm requesting that we meet no less than quarterly, you know, so we can discuss such concerns and also to ensure that when we have such renewals or petitions for charters, that we look at the information and we utilize the Rubik or checkoff sheet, as we'd like to call it, to ensure that when charter schools come up for such renewals, that they are meeting the criteria that is expected of all charter schools. You know, some of the conditions that I'm looking at in regards to disproportionality, obviously, we've heard already in the past, but just the percentage of special ed students, percentage of EL students, and just the racial demographics percentages as well. Let me see. No, I do agree with our, many of the public comments in regards to cohabitating a school with a charter school, one of our schools with a charter school. Definitely not the best idea, as we have learned as a board. You know, hopefully in the future, that can be addressed. I know we're looking at if their Savant's population of students goes up, that they will be moving to another site. And if that is the case, that's good. I think it's good for both schools. But we need to consider that in the future as well, that this is a, definitely a lesson to learn from, that we shouldn't be doing such, you know, making such decisions on sharing a site or co-inhabiting a site. Obviously, that wasn't a good idea. And let me see if there's anything else that I might have missed. Okay, this one is a question for Sukie. I know we're, when we're looking at the renewal for Savant, and there were some conditions that were put into the MOU. If we're, if we're looking at a renewal, what is the length of the term of the renewal? Is it going to be a five-year renewal, or could it be less years?
Certainly. Again, as a result of changes from fifteen oh five, there are now three tiers of charter schools, low, middle, and high performing. Savant has been categorized by the California Department of Education as middle, and thus they are eligible for a five-year renewal. The board does not have discretion to give them a shorter or longer term than five years.
Okay, and thank you, Sukie. So during that five years, as we're putting in these conditions within the MOU, how do we ensure accountability for the charter school, not just Savant, but all charter schools in regards, if they're not meeting such terms? Do we have to wait five years to be able to address those terms or to revoke such a approval for the charter?
So if a charter is not complying with the, with the provisions of its charter and/or its memorandum of understanding, then the district board does have the discretion under Education Code four seven six oh seven to invoke revocation. Now, it's a multi-step process that does provide due process to the charter, but it is a remedy that's available to the district. And we're going to try to put in specific terms that are understandable and easily understood, you know, by everyone that's involved so that there's no misunderstanding of what the district board expects and the timelines within which it expects those things.
Dr. Wyatt, are you, you're not muted, but I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I was just saying thank you to Sukie and Madam President, that is all for my comments.
Thank you, and Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to first say to Sukie, thank you for your guidance and information. I also want to say thank you to our speakers tonight. We, we, we heard you tonight, we've heard you the other times you've spoken. There, it's important for you to understand that we care about all the students in this district, and even with Savant and the other charter schools, they are still our students. And we try to do what's right. We have made some mistakes. We, we don't mind admitting we made some mistakes, but we're going to learn from those mistakes. But also, I wanted to ask Ms. Hopwood, is it possible we could get some information out? Because some things came up tonight, and, and, and even in the previous meetings, that's not exactly what we want people, we want people to, to get the real facts. And I know everybody spoke, they spoke from their heart and, and, and wouldn't say anything unless they thought it was certainly the gospel. But even when it comes to things like the students, yes, Savant has its own board, but there would be a Savant in this district if we didn't approve for those students to be a part of. But, but Del Valle Ho, number one, want you to understand us loud and clear. We hear what you're saying, Savant, the same thing. We hear what you're saying. We made some mistakes, but we're working on improving those. And, and we're going to move on because the bottom line, we have to be here for all students. That, thank you, and I just wanted to say to Cabinet and staff, thank you for all that you have done. And, and, and we'll certainly not, again, saying we're perfect. We have made some mistakes, we have not been as transparent as we should have been, and we have a lot of work to do with that. And I'm not even going to say, trust me, I'm not going to say that because we know in due time, we hope all of you will trust all of us and know that we are in this business for the right reason. And especially as board members, and I feel I speak on behalf of all seven of us. So thank you, and thank you for your input, because what you shared is what we need to hear, and we want to do our best to rectify everything that we can and clarify everything that we have not. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Hill, and thank you, board members. I don't probably need to repeat on any longer anymore than what's been said, other than the fact, you know, it is so important to us that we create a space for all of our students so that they can have the best education possible. And so as we work together as a team, although I say we're in it together, but we got to work better together as well to move forward. And the things that we have to do, it's been a tough year. It's been a lot of just changes and different things that we didn't expect, but I'm looking forward to when everything pulls itself together and we move forward. In the midst of this, laws are still changing, and we're still having to keep up with all of those things. It seems like everything happened at the same time. But here we are, and we are again ready to move for what's in the best interest of our students. So if there are no other comments or no other questions or anything to clarify, we appreciate everyone's comment, everyone's input, continue to keep giving us, giving us input. Was that something that I heard?
Yes, I, I put a, I put a comment in the chat.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I just also want to, to share with the, with the community, kind of repeating everything that's already been said, you know, we've heard your concerns, you know, loud and clear. It sounds, it sounds to me that one of the biggest issues is the, 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 the facilities, right, that are being used. We don't necessarily disagree, you know, or don't want Savant to, to, you know, move forward and continue existing, right? So unfortunately, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Sukie, it is my understanding that the MOU for the facilities agreement has already passed. You know, the board has previously approved the facilities, and I guess that, that's the, that's, that's where the board can learn, the reference that, you know, Dr. Hill's making in, in terms of, you know, transparency and moving forward with it. Unfortunately, there's nothing that we can do at this point, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, Sukie, if there's nothing that can be do at this particular moment about the MOU for the facilities agreement, unless Savant is willing to sit back with the district and basically kind of reopen and reengage in that conversation, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. This board took action at an open meeting in May of twenty twenty to approve the facilities use agreement, and it calls for Savant to use that space for the upcoming term. And as several of the board members referenced, if Savant gets to a population or an ADA of two forty, the district has a right to relocate them.
Okay, thank you. So, so yeah, like I said, you know, we have heard you loud and clear, and we have asked the district, you know, Ms. Hopwood, to, to put systems in place so that we can hold charters accountable across the board when we're, where it doesn't seem like we're singling any one charter school, because that's not the case with Savant. And so again, it sounds, if I understood correctly, that the main issue here is the facilities use agreement, and unfortunately, there is, there isn't anything that the board can do about that at this point. So again, you know, let's just, let's just learn from this and, you know, move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are no additional comments, I'm going to reread the motion. The staff's analysis and recommendation is to approve the charter renewal and the MOU. Is there a member of the board that would like to make a motion?
It's already been moved.
I think after a while, I was, I was instructed legally to make sure we were clear on what we were saying, so. All right, so it's moved in second, and so I am going to go ahead and call for the vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
I want to make a statement before I, I make my vote. Based on the conditions of the MOU, I, if I, if those conditions were not included, I would vote no. But because of the concerns that you all brought in, that we have, are in there, I will vote yes.
Okay, Ms. Tabios?
Same, I with the conditions of the MOU.
Okay, so that's, that's an I, correct? Because I've read into the motion, but we are clear that that MOU is in motion. All right, thank you, and Gwen Rogers, I, motion carried. Thank you all for your time and entertaining, and as we said, the hour is late, but we're willing to stay as long as it takes in order to provide clarity and transparency for our community and everyone involved. So thank you so much, and now I'm going to move forward with, let's see, where am I, eleven point five ratification of the adoption of Title III Budget Plan for the Multilingual Program Department.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any additional comments? No? All right, Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Tabios?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, I, and I, as I said, the time is weary, and I forgot to bring a board member back. So let me, let me go ahead and bring Mr. Tillman back. Not like my, like Mr. VP couldn't have done it. It'd be nice. All right.
He's back, he's in the waiting room.
Is he? Okay, great.
I'll admit him, Madam President, there.
Can you, did you admit him in? All right, and, and I'm, I'm, we're still in the middle of the vote. Mr. Tillman, you're on the line? Yes, is that a yes?
He's in now.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes, I'm in mute.
I'm here.
All right, Mr. Tillman, and I'm finishing up with the vote, vote on eleven point five. All right, Mr. Tillman, and I'm finishing up with the bo- vote on eleven point five ratification of the adoption of the Title Three Budget Plan for the Multilingual Programs Department. And I am voting aye. And would you like to weigh in on your vote?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Thank you so much. Eleven point six, twenty twenty-one California School Board Association Delegate Assembly Election.
We have to pick some people?
Um, let me see here. Ki- Karen, are we picking on this one?
Yes, you are.
It's how many, how many, Karen?
Thirty? There's thirteen vacancies. You have up to six people you can pick.
Okay, so we can pick six.
I would choose Randall, he's middle of one.
Okay, and let me just make a statement. I know um, Ms. Tabios, you're new, some, some, sometimes these individuals that are on there are people that we know or we've served. Together with before in, you know, or maybe a representation that we may know of an area that needs to be represented to be a part of the delegates. For our assoc- San Bernardino County Association. So I heard of a name. You said.
Randall Sinney Sinney Fiddle.
Randall Sinney Fiddle. Okay, that's one.
Tom Courtney.
Okay, Dr. Hill, you said who?
Tom Courtney.
Tom Courtney, okay.
I'm recommending Eric Swanson.
Oh, right, Eric Swanson. I would like to recommend Kathy Thompson.
We up to four?
Uh, we are up to five. We have, oh, no, four, I'm sorry, I wrote a name twice.
I would like to recommend Flora Martinez from Ontario Moncler.
Flora Martinez, okay. And we need one more. Let's see.
Well, the only other one I know is uh, uh. Snellings from U K I P or Cala Mesa.
Michael.
Michael.
I would, I would concur.
He's very active.
All right, so um. Ms. Cunningham, we have Randall Cisneros, Tom Courtney, Eric Swanson, Kathy Thompson, Flora, was it Martinez?
Yes.
Okay, Flora Martinez, and then the final one was Michael Snellings. All right, board. And she has those, and so at this time, w- we like to make a motion on those, that slate of candidates.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any other discussion? Not, Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Tabios? Gwen Rogers, I, motion carried. Thank you. All right, we are now at twelve point oh. Summary of board member requests, twelve point one, review of the requests. Ms. Ontiveros, take it away.
Uh, thank you, President Rogers. So I did come up with about twenty requests for you tonight, so we'll see if I caught them all or if. Uh, there were any others that you thought we needed to add. So. Uh, the first request uh came from Mr. Danny Tillman to consider the use of a new audit firm, not because he doesn't like our audit firm, but because he thinks fresh eyes are good. Um. Uh, Mr. Danny Tillman then asked uh the question, he answered himself um about how long the second dose of the Pfizer vaccine took to be effective. Um, uh, Mr. Danny Tillman then asked if we could find out how many of our employees had been vaccinated and suggested that we do a voluntary self-reporting system. Uh, Mr. Danny Tillman asked, and later it was also, he was joined by Barbara, Dr. Barbara Flores, Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina, and Ms. Myra Sabios. To consider offering a socially-distanced in-person graduation event for our schools, um, and add that to a future board meeting for discussion. Dr. Barbara Flores asked uh that we consider adding an agenda item to share information about when it would be deemed safe to bring small groups of cohorts back for those specialized supports that the board approved. Dr. Barbara Flores asked or requested data in a board presentation about the impact of footsteps to brilliance. Dr. Barbara Flores asked, um, would we, that she would like to see broad notes on the vendor contracts, um, as well as descriptions about their primary focus or purpose. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina said that she'd like us to consider establishing a, a gay advisory council for parents, this Pacific Islanders Advisory Council for Parents. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked um questions about how vendors were paid, which was answered by um, uh, Dr. Rodriguez. Um, Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked how much they were being paid for their services. Um. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked if we would consider building capacity to um offer these programs that district vendors, through district staff instead of through vendors. Um, and I know Dr. Rodriguez uh indicated that was part of her plan. Uh, Dr. Margaret Hill asked if we would consider adding workshops for how to use technology, and uh, Dr. Rodriguez pledged that we would bring information about that. Um, Dr. Margaret Hill asked, um, in addition to the raw data, could we identify the ethnicity focus on that chart about the family engagement vendors? Uh, Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we confirm the vaccine. Property are following social distance guidelines and. And here indicated that he do so. Um, Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we consider coordinating book and supply distributions to avoid conflicts, conflicts with the time that students are in district distance learning. Um, Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we would provide information to the board about our plans for returning to in-person learning in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Ms. Margaret, uh, Dr. Margaret Hill asked about um communication with internet service providers to improve broad, broadband services. And uh, Dr. Hill also asked if we could survey employees and parents about their comfort with returning to school in person. Ms. Myra Sabios then asked if we could consider in-person special education assessments, um, and to bring that forward for board discussion. And then I believe um that Dr. Scott Wyatt and Ms. Myra Sabios both, both asked about checks to hold all charter schools accountable. Right, those were the follow-ups that I collected through this meeting.
Right, board, um, that is our summary of all the activity that took place tonight. And it looks like it was all captured. I don't see any other raised hands, so that brings us to thirteen point oh.
Move to adjourn?
Thirteen point one. All right, I, I heard move to adjourn, and so we want to thank everyone that twelled with us tonight. We'll see you at our next scheduled board meeting. We are now going to go into closed session, and we will not be um sharing out after. No.
Close session right now?
Absolutely. Yes, you missed that.
Thirty at night?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we're still going. I said that earlier. So please, uh, log off. Thank everyone for watching again, and God bless and stay safe.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Good night, everyone.
And good night.